Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 1st City Council Meeting for the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida. We now normally do the Pledge of Allegiance, but before we do the Pledge of Allegiance today, our city does not have a special service on Veterans Day, which is November 11th. And I always like to honor the brave men and women who have served our country. Veterans Day is your day. It's the day that we show some appreciation for the sacrifice that you made in serving this country. So I'm going to ask if you are a veteran, if you would please stand up. (Applause). He can't stand up, but Glenn Gunn, I know he's a veteran in the Coast Guard. Stay standing, and here's what I want to do. Normally, I lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Veterans, nice and loud and proud. You can lead that Pledge of Allegiance for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All veterans of our city, their families, all people in this country, thank you. Thank you for this city. Thank you for me. Thank you for all of us. It's not said enough. We wouldn't be able to do what we're doing if you didn't do what you did. So thanks again. All right. Patty, now, Madam Clerk, if you would, please, throw a call roll.
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Natero.
Here.
Councilmember Rhea Swell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
And Councilmember Robinaki hasn't arrived yet.
Okay, and let the record reflect that. We've got a telephone hookup. We have five people present, so we have a quorum, and we will proceed. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Right.
Motion by Frank Bankard.
Second.
Second.
Leslie Natero, or Dave Gaddis. Either, and any discussion? No discussion by the council? Any discussion by the citizens? Act the Council? Take a voice vote. All in favor of approving the agenda? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes? Six to zero. Item two is the citizens' comments. The way we do citizens' comments, if you're new here, on any item that is not on the agenda, okay, so if you see it listed on the agenda, there's going to come a time where I'm going to ask for citizen comments like I just did on the agenda, right? So there'll be a time when you can come up and speak about an agenda item. But if you don't see it here, if there's something else that's on your mind, you know, somebody, I don't know, you know, put a hole in your street, and you want to let the city manager know, come over and talk with us. The way we're going to do it is you come right up over here by the podium, please announce yourself, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes of time. If you need up to 12 minutes, you have to get that from other people. They need to give that to me beforehand. We ask that you speak with calm and with politeness to everyone here, and I think it should work out real well. With that said, is there anyone who would like to address the council? Yes, sir. Gentlemen here.
Hi, I'm the rank number 126, 9th Street. So, two things. One, I wanted to see if we have an update. I know these are comments, and I don't know if you guys can interact, but, you know, 9th Street here, where I live, has been continually been flooded, and it seems to be, I think, it's three years from now. And still nothing gets done, and it's a hot tide, it still floods. It's really a drainage issue from, like, 128 to 124. And so, just trying to understand if there's any type of room in the budget for basic infrastructure would be awesome. And then, number two, I wanted to see if there's any update or anything around beach umbrellas on the beach. I've got two young kids. It really makes it a quality of life issue for us here at Bel Air Beach, not being able to have safety for my kids from a sun point of view. I know you guys have talked about it a lot, but at the same time, you know, we haven't really received a lot of updates on it from our perspective, and we're getting a little frustrated around that. So, we have just two comments and questions, but it is really affecting the quality of life here. We just want to put that out.
Thank you. So here's what I'd like to do. With the council that's present, normally, Mr. Clever, we're not supposed to have an interaction, direct interaction. You have that part right. But I hate to say to you, because I will absolutely address beach umbrellas. I'm the man on that. It's my lawsuit. I'll tell you all about it. But the other thing is the city manager, and I think you're going to like what he has to tell you. I'd rather do that now than have you wait till the end of the night and stuff. But in order to do that, I need the council to tell us that it's okay to dispense with the rules, and that we have this interaction. So with that said, does anybody have a problem if we dispense the rules and answer these questions for him now?
Do I need a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to dispense with the rules.
Motion. Is that okay? Gaddis, any comments? Citizens have any comments? Bring it to a vote. Voice vote. All in favor of dispensing with the rules so that we can answer the citizens tonight? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes six to zero. Let's give you your answers. First of 9th Street, let's take care of that first. I'm going to be furthest to the city manager. He's our expert on it. Lynn Reeves.
Yes, that 9th Street is in a rotation of projects. This year, it's 12th and 13th, and 17th and 18th. And I think, I don't have it in front of me, but if you want to call, just call City Hall and ask for me. I'll give you the year when it's done. There is a check valve on 9th Street, and so there shouldn't be high tide water coming out, but when it rains, there is water because the pipes are full. And so, it's on the list of projects.
Okay. And I can tell you, at high tide, it definitely floods, and it doesn't drain, so it's just constant standing water. And so, if you try and get out on a bike, or walk down the street, the street's completely flooded. So, you know, I know that we're coming into this park, and a lot more people use this park, so it would be really great if we could celebrate 9th Street. And again, it's been three years, so I just want to make sure that it's answered.
Does that answer that question? Okay, I'm going to answer your question on beach umbrellas issue. It's not a city issue. If the city doesn't, actually, it's the citizens who hold the rights to use 6th Street, 12th Street, and 19th Street beach accesses. That's why it's the citizens that have taken the step, which is my lawsuit, but there are just 43 people who've joined me. So, an update. Everyone in the city, I'm glad you asked this, because there's no other way I would have been able to say this, okay? The beach umbrella ban is in full force. You may have gotten away with putting it up until this time, and the reason why you got away with it is because the sheriffs were unable to write you a ticket. At the last council meeting, commission meeting, with the Bel Air Shore Commissioners, they passed a very heavy fines schedule. The first umbrella violation will cost you $100. Your second one will cost you $250. Your third one, and thereafter, for the next five years, will cost you $500 a hop. If you decide to challenge it with their magistrate, I know you're shaking, you're in it, I shook my head, $500 upwards of a fine for your first violation. So it can be a very expensive afternoon at the beach. That is in play right now. They passed that last time. I think the 29th was the 10-day waiting period. So if you go out there and put one up, you might get lucky, and the sheriff gives you a warning. You might not. I can tell you, they get, they get to keep the revenue from this. They get to keep pretty much all the revenue, and they're looking forward to making that revenue. In terms of the lawsuit, I'm not going to tell you anything that's not public, okay? The initial motions to dismiss failed. I won them. I defended them successfully. We're now, we finished the paper discovery. We're now going to start with the depositions. That will end the rest of the discovery, which should end by the end of February. And once that ends, then the lawyers will do the lawyer stuff, because there's a bunch of issues that are constitutional issues, which are fairly complex, that are going to be briefed, and possibly, depending on how the agreement between the two parties goes, may be able to be actually tried before the trial. It's scheduled for trial next July. That's as fast as justice works, okay? It's almost two years that we had to wait. I am going nowhere. I'm going to continue this. There's still time. If anybody wants to intervene, you can be an intervenor. If you want to do that, this lady here, she's wearing a red shirt. Her name is Deborah Mall. See her. Okay? Do not come to me, okay?
No, I appreciate it. I just, it's unfortunate that we just came and confused it all in just a minute.
It's extremely unfortunate.
Safety issue for the kids, for myself. It's ridiculous.
Exactly. Mr. Bankard, our council member Bankard is experienced firsthand. His three-year-old granddaughter was thrown into the hot sun, right?
Well, I just, two weeks ago, a neighbor, well, I'm not going to be honest, okay? Knocked on my door, was talking to me about the beach umbrellas. And he has an autistic grandchild that no longer can reach, okay, because he cannot stay in the sun for more than 30 minutes. Now, I don't know why this council doesn't grasp the whole of this and take it to the courts. Mr. Manzo is doing it. I applaud him, but that's not your job in my opinion. It's his council, because you as a taxpayer, he is a taxpayer. It affects the property now instead, okay? And I plead, you know, up here, and I just can't get enough support.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you guys so much. Thanks for letting me.
Oh, no problem. Take care of those beautiful children. Thank you.
Hi, Mike Abel, 325, this is Rachel. Yeah, I'd like to add my comments to the beach issue. First of all, it's kind of disenthanded. It's not all beaches. It's only the beaches that are within Bel Air Shores.
Correct.
So, all the citizens, beach are beaches, probably not wrong. My problem, why isn't this council working? What is your excuse for not working on this issue?
I will tell you, this came up, and I believe, and I could be wrong on this, because I'm going straight off recollection, Mr. Abel, but the, Robinaki made a motion. I don't even know that it got a second. I can't participate in it, obviously, since it's my lawsuit. Any citizen, any citizen could have brought that lawsuit. And by the way, to dispel any misinformation, there's been more than a share of it put out, okay? I didn't go directly to a lawsuit. They were, we went across the street on July 21st, 2020, in an attempt to resolve it. The city manager came. Glenn Gunn came. We might say, went across, we went on Zoom, myself and Jody Shirley. We each spoke on different things. We didn't speak on behalf of the city. Lynn Reeves did speak on behalf of the city. They rejected us. Okay? After I was told by Mayor Schmidt, and I called earlier to get a moratorium on the thing, he said, "Give me a chance to work on it." And then ultimately, they said, "No, we're just going to leave it in place." One of their commissioners, and I have the tape in my legal files, and it's public information for them, actually said, "I'll listen to Bel Air Beach, but I'm not changing my mind." I mean, Commissioner Bloom, okay? He had no intention of changing his mind. Yet there was this misinformation that, oh, we were close to a settlement. There was no settlement, because I gave them two weeks of notice, of advance notice, before the lawsuit, but I didn't go right to lawsuit. I gave them two weeks. That deadline would have been, I think, August 14th or so. I might be off by a day or two. I didn't bring the lawsuit till September 28th. They had a month and a half to reach out to me. Not one person picked up the phone. Not one person picked up an email. Not one person contacted the city and said, "Wait a minute, Mr. Manzo, hold off." Okay? And then I finally pulled the trigger and said, "I'm going to go for the lawsuit, and that's what's going to get these rights back, and I'm going to win this."
My question is, Jim, that's your lawsuit. That's not on behalf of all the citizens.
Right. You all benefit.
I'm asking you as mayor, why isn't the city council working on this issue?
I have to recuse myself, so ask the city council. And it's all, I did what I could do, so city council.
Right. Oh, they urge to recuse.
Right. So, city council?
I am pleading with council to do something about it, all right? I asked to go to court for a temporary court injunction. Couldn't get nowhere with that.
As a city or an attorney?
As a city, okay? Because it affects everyone that lives, well, everyone lives in Bel Air Beach. And we just can't get the support vote. We can't get four votes here.
On this issue?
On this city council. To take it, to, look, again, I commend you, the mayor, for doing this, all right? I'm not going to intervene with the lawsuit, because I don't want to be stifled, all right?
But Danny, you're not interfering. I'm just, I'm asking about this lawsuit.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying, we should have our lawsuit. We should, we should have done this before I was in the lawsuit. And if you look at the tapes back, then I believe, July 2020, this entire council was on board before they went to the Bel Air Shores meeting to do something. The mayor clearly says, and if I say something wrong, correct, the mayor clearly says, "We want to give them a short notice, but we've got our rights now."
Okay, I'm paraphrasing.
Right.
Any other council members?
I'm sure. I'll address that.
May I say something first?
Yes.
The, and I'm, we'll say it directly as I can. The city council has a code provision that says the council cannot discuss prospective or pending litigation. That's...
Litigation's not broad, I remember it's broad.
It's private litigation, so I...
Definitely, I don't understand.
Could I complete my thought?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
They have that as one of the rules that they have to abide by. So the status of the case is that the city did not, was not a party to the lawsuit. The city has not been brought into the lawsuit, and private citizens initiated the lawsuit, and private citizens are involved in the litigation process. And up until now, the city council has not taken any action to become involved in the lawsuit, and the lawsuit is taking its course. So that, that's the status. I would caution the city council on discussing prospective litigation, because that's the rule. So that, that's my statement to the city council in giving them legal advice.
And I understand that not all of the terms of court act, that...
Pardon?
That's your opinion. I understand.
No, it's not my opinion. It's what the city code states.
So they can't discuss pending litigation, either. My lawsuit, as members of that, what is the first appeal that's on this issue?
They can't...
Not if the two cities together, they just can't, but that's what I'm hearing?
They cannot discuss pending litigation that involves a city. They cannot discuss, according to the rules that exist now, prospective litigation. I didn't make up the rule. I'm only telling you what it is.
Like, you paint the city council into a corner by doing that, and the city council no longer function against what others do.
That is correct. I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I'm, I'm telling you what the city code says, so...
What information? I'll agree with you.
Yes, sir. Wait, hang on, Mr. Hanzig. I want to have, like, your captain.
Will you speak into my phone?
Yes, please, speak into my captain.
No. No, I understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
Captain Zabel, I'm going to address you, because it's my lawsuit, and I'll talk about it a lot, all right? And, yeah, first off, it's not prospective litigation. Cities never been threatened with coming into this lawsuit, and we were not counterclaiming by the city of, the town of Bel Air Shore, okay? So it's my private lawsuit, and anyone can join it subordinate to me as an intervener. I can object to people coming in. I'm not objecting to a single person. I will object if you're not sharing my views, which is, we want our umbrellas back, but that, that is long more than umbrella ordinance that I'm fighting. I'm fighting for their abuse of the parking lots. If you go there, Frank Bankard is a witness to this one. A 100-ton construction crane was parked there. They've used their parking lots as if they're their own personal parking lots. I'm fighting that. And I'll tell you what, okay? They don't own, they own those lots, but they own them with a sole purpose, and the sole purpose is to keep them for the Bel Air Beach citizens living east of the Central Line and Gulf Boulevard, and it is for our beach and bathing purposes. They are entitled to no other use. That's my interpretation, and about six other attorneys. And I'll tell you what, they use them as if it's theirs, and I'm out to change that. We're going to quiet that title. And what we're going to do, because they've abused their trusteeship, I'm not telling you anything that's not in the lawsuit, and I'll be happy to send you a copy of it, okay? That's public record, and I will send you that. My law, my file, because somebody's going to ask here if they can have my litigation filing. No, you can't. But the lawsuit itself is a public record of Bel Air Shore, and I'll be more than happy to give you that. And it's also, you can get it on the city...
I agree, Paul. Quiet the title. I don't understand that.
Quiet the title means to figure out who owns this and who can do what with it. It says that we have the right to have beach and bathing purposes, and my interpretation is very simple. I go to every beach in the country, every beach in the world, and I've never found anybody in advanced shade. It's a health issue. It's just ridiculous, okay? You need to have a reasonable basis to have a law. That's the lowest level of scrutiny. My take on this is that it's unconstitutional, because in Florida, we have what's known as a right of privacy. And you're saying, "What? Right of privacy on a beach? You couldn't be more public." The right of privacy is your medical privacy. You have the right to make all medical determinations yourself under the Florida Constitution. I'll decide if I want to expose my skin to the sun, and this is the only time I could ever, in my life, ever think of the city taking away a protective device. The city makes you wear masks. The city makes, or the state wears you make seatbelts and helmet laws and everything else for protection, okay? And they're taking away umbrellas that can stop skin cancer, that can stop heat stroke. Here's, this is unprecedented, and it's more than that, because they opened up the bottle when they decided to tangle with Mitt, okay?
Point of order. Point of order. He's well over his three minutes for citizens' comments, and discussing the lawsuit is not, the city's not a party, but it has nothing to do with this council meeting.
He asked for an update, and I'm going to rule that out of order. If he's not, if he's getting an explanation from me, and I'm giving it to him, I'm not bound by a time limit, so I'll continue, okay? The lawsuit also has bicycles on the beach. Down along that wet sand, which is, anybody can ride a bicycle in, and God bless you, if you can ride it in the dry sand, okay?
Absolutely.
Right. But down there, there's a thing called the Florida Public Trust Doctrine. That means that belongs to all the citizens, and actually, all, all the people, okay? Anyone can go and use that wet sand for recreation purposes. And you can't ride a bicycle in there, see? Now, we're going to come to later tonight and put a van on electric bicycles. I don't want to ride electric bicycles, but a pedal bicycle, you know, a good old-fashioned foot-powered bicycle? Why not? That's recreation. And on top of that, why do I have to fast while I'm on the beach? That's another thing that's unconstitutional. So I'm attacking all of it, and when I get done, I'll take away their trusteeship, because they hold it as trustee. When they get done, there's going to be another group, hopefully, there that runs those spots, and they run them properly. That's what I'm shooting for.
All right. Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. And by the way, Captain, I know you're captain in the Navy, and thank you.
I'm tired.
It's okay. I appreciate the service, so thank you for coming up. Gentlemen, so your hand up, any other citizens? Yes, come on.
I was unable to attend a work session, but I listened to the tapes, and I heard something in there very disturbing as a citizen and a taxpayer, and one who has taken an oath multiple times in my life. And it was related to the quote basically being, "Well, this is why we have liability insurance." And it went to passing rules, or circumventing, or disregarding established law, rules, ordinances, whatever, for the information of the citizens. Our liability bond or insurance is only $1 million. So hypothetically, if somebody on the council or the council did something wrong, and a citizen, and the citizens sued for $2.5 million and won, who do you think is responsible for the other million and a half? We are. That's not what we elected people to do, is to circumvent or ignore the oaths of office. And I take serious offense with that. Yes, I listened to the audio tapes. Don't look at me stumpfounded. Section 9.02 is the oath of office for this city. Basically, it says you swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, the State of Florida, and all laws and ordinances. You don't flagrantly disregard the law because you don't like it. I'm saying, if you can't consciously do the job that you swore an oath to, you don't belong up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanzig, and thank you for the service to... Great. I'm going to make sure I get it right. Command Master Chief of the Navy, in the Navy, right?
In the Navy.
In the Navy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go meet Captain Zabel back there. Maybe you guys sail together.
It's a secret, actually.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Bill Booth, 2611 Bay Shore.
Bill, you just cut out. You were doing good, so maybe you got in real super close to it. Did you hit the button, maybe? Is it green?
Hello?
There you go. Okay.
Bill Booth, 2611 Bay Shore. Unfortunately, this is my first time complaining about this, but I've had discussions with Lynn. The house next door to me is had a dumpster in its front yard for five months, and the last three months, no one has worked on my house, and I'm sick of it. I mean, I pay, we pay, all pay a lot of taxes, and there's a dumpster in our neighborhood right next to my house, and no one can figure out how to get rid of it.
Mr. Booth, you picked the right night. This is the first time that we've had our code officer, at our invitation, come here.
I know that.
So we're going to ask him about your situation and find out what's the situation.
I mean, the house has been vacant for two years. I believe the owner, the actual owner of the house has died. It's in court, you know, the person taking care of the place is in California, and could care less what the place looks like. The dock is falling into the, into the, into the water, and I have to look at this every day. And everyone that goes up, goes up my street looks at it every day. And yet, a neighbor of mine is, was redoing the house, and he got caught, a code violation for trying to improve his house in a matter of two days. And this thing has been there for four months, and I'm tired of people complaining without identifying themselves. Bill Booth, 2611 Bay Shore. And I have a complaint. I'd like to see the other person that complained about my neighbor trying to do better on his house and make the neighborhood nice, and have, ask why. It's ridiculous. Yep. Second thing is, where are our police in the morning on Bel Air, on the Bel Air Bridge? It says 35 miles an hour. Today, I'd walk the bridge every day. Please say hello to me or beep when you walk, drive by at 60 miles an hour. I watched a car pass, two cars, today, and nothing. The police aren't around. We could make a ton of money. We could have enough money to do more lawsuits if they just tag people for driving crazy on that road. So, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Booth, hang, hang one second here.
If, if they just tag people for driving crazy on that road. So, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Booth, hang, hang on a second here, um, let me give you a piece of information. I'm gonna ask the police, because they're coming up next, okay? Once we finish with citizen comments, and I'm gonna ask-
Oh, who are you?
No, no, I'm asking the sheriff, I have, I have two sheriffs on this. One sheriff's officer will give us our report on the regular crime. Sheriff, I'd like you to address the speeding issue, and, uh, and Danny Doherty, our code enforcement deputy, um, he will, uh, talk about the enforcement on the dumpster issue. Let me give you one piece of information with regarding to these anonymous complaints. That used to be a problem, in fact, it was a problem statewide, because citizens used it sometimes to get even with people, and like you say, you know, you got a good guy, and he's getting busted. In fact, the governor and the legislature on this one, they passed an ordinance that took, uh, a law that took effect, and now all code complaints need to be identified, so there is no more anonymity.
Who was that guy? Who was the person that turned Jeff in?
Well, the ones that started after they passed the law, so that's, it's a recent thing, I believe it, yeah.
Yeah, well, how long ago?
July?
Well, this was done after July.
Okay.
And the guy was never, he could never find that identity, so I'd like, I'd like to know that gentleman's name and turn Jeff in.
Actually, it was before July 1st.
What?
It was before July 1st.
Sovietic?
Any other citizens? Deborah?
I just have, I'll be quick, I just have two-
Just identify yourself, I know who you are, but they don't.
115 Cosway Boulevard across the street, I have two concerns. Last meeting, we spoke at length, you guys spoke at length about the crane on the 12th Street access yet. And, and to Mr. Hanzig's, uh, comments about the insurance, I totally agree with you on that.
Excuse me, Ms. Walt, let me interrupt you. Patty, hold the timer, Rob and Aki's arrived at 6:29, okay? Please continue.
But, um, we, when the sign was installed out front, I have pictures, I have video. No one was there supervising it, number one. Number two, there, there were only cones immediately behind the truck, not blocking the sidewalk. So all the people, they started at sunup, at, because I'm up running. And, um, the, um, there was no blockage of the sidewalk, or a blockage coming into the parking lot or anything. And we had just talked about the danger, and they had a big crane to put that thing in. So, to me, that's negligence, and I believe that we should be supervising things a little better with those things. My other comment is, is that I noticed on the agenda that we are going to, um, uh, give a certificate or something for the mask or the handicap to access the beach, and I'm all for that, believe me. But, um, I also believe that maybe the city could do something for the beach accesses, because, um, uh, autism, cancer, those are all disabilities as well. So, we who have those types of disabilities, or autoimmune disorders or whatever, need protection at the beach as well, not only access to it, but protection of it. And we have just as much right to access the beach at these street accesses as we do in our city. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, before you go, let me see if the city manager wishes to comment with regards to the sign installed since you're here. Lynn, do you want to speak on this?
Well, there was, I was out there, Kyle was out there, uh, maybe not when you took your pictures. There were cones around the truck, the side, front and back, it was not blocking any sidewalk. And the sign was put, uh, in, and, uh, Kyle and I were out there, I know, two or three times.
Okay, I, I, I got a camera on my house, it shoots it all, but anyway. The, the cones were very close to the truck, there was nothing blocking off that sidewalk.
It, it didn't need to be, because the truck wasn't blocking the sidewalk.
No, no, not for the truck, what if something had fallen?
The crane wasn't operating towards the sidewalk. It was operating-
I got videos, I mean, I felt, I felt when I was over there that it was a danger.
Frank? I, I, Ms. Walt? Ms. Walt? Deborah? Just go back for a second, because I have a-
I, I, I did contact the city manager about, complain or two about it, um, and I was leaving town for the day. But the day before there, what got me upset was they were wallowing out there with no shield around. And if you ever get walkers on it, you'll know it, that's the way out.
I just think we're getting sloppy on our safety.
Let me ask you this, you, you have video, you don't have to, it's certainly not really a requirement. Are you able to share any of that with us and send that to us? At any point, you can send it to, um, any one of us, or you can send it to all of us, or you can send it to Patty Gentry, she can distribute it to everyone, then it would become a public record, and then we can see what you saw, and that would be great. And then we can deal with this again. Anyone else? Uh, June Vanscoy?
June Vanscoy, 7th Street, Bel Air Beach. Um, as far as the crane, I had to come in here to get a book out of the, um, mailbox, and there was no spotter out there. The cones were just being placed, and they weren't being placed right next to the unit. I actually caught, I have pictures as well, okay? There was no spotter, there was no one supervising, there was a guy looking up at the crane, there was not a second party. I witnessed it all, pulling up to this parking lot to get that book. And coming back out, and quite frankly, I was pretty intimidated having a crane up in the air, and I have a convertible, so I was looking very intimidated about that with no backup security system. No, I'm not saying they weren't here at some point in time, I did not witness that, and I was not watching it all day long, so I can't speak to that. The other thing, this city passed a resolution, I believe, that they were not involved in the umbrella lawsuit against Bel Air Shore. Okay, so for the gentleman that was questioning that, the city said they passed a resolution. Now, there were some council members that voted against it, obviously, and then, of course, the mayor had to abstain from the vote on it because of this lawsuit, that's the other thing. Third thing, I wanna make sure that, I personally witnessed the park board putting on one heck of an event this weekend. And, and I personally think they did a fantastic job, and I, I saw so many children from this city participate, and it was very heartwarming, and I think this city needs to readdress the fact that we do have children, and we need to be their voice as community, as a community, and start putting more money into this park out here for our, our children to enjoy. We wanna be the premier city, we wanna retain our citizens who you know, your neighbors you know. We need to step up our game and do things to make it desirable, to make them want to stay, stay in our city. We have neighbors that have been here, grew up here, and are still here, and they're raising the next generation. And I think that this is something that this city needs to trust, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens like to speak? Seeing no other hands, I'm going to close citizen comments. Next, we have the presentation of Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. I'm gonna ask that the patrol sheriff make the first presentation, and then code officer, or code officer, you're gonna go second. And if you'd just introduce us, yourself, so everyone knows who you are.
Good afternoon. Corporal Kellman, Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. These are our stats for September 2021. There were 821 events in the city, uh, 205 number traffic stops. There were nine suspicious persons, nine boarding with vessel stops, six, uh, orders violations, which resulted in seven arrests. For the city, there were no crashes.
Sheriff, I note that one of the things is a motor vehicle theft, and every, this is available to all citizens if you sign up at the county. There is a, you get a blast from the sheriff telling you on real time, this is September, but this is telling us what happened, you know, like last week and everything. It comes every week. Thank God, most of the times, it says nothing for Bel Air Beach. But I noticed that there was some, another motor vehicle in our city, it just happened, I guess, last week. Is that, do you know anything about that one? That would show up till the next one, but, um, there was another, it looked like there was another motor vehicle theft. Did we have any group of people maybe going around, I just wanna alert the citizens.
Well, I gotta tell everyone, make sure you lock your car doors, do not break into the cars, you just walk around, try car doors. And if you can pick your wallets, your keys in the car, you can complete fine.
And your handguns too, we've had issues with that too. Okay, um, council, any questions? Oh, great job, as usual, just, you know, I, I, we'll make, make sure we pass on the word here that, you know, keep things locked up, and, uh, you know, because we know that's an epidemic, they just go around and lift doors, call it lifting, I think, and, you know, if you happen to have it unlocked, they lift all the stuff inside too, but that's not good. And the bad thing is unfortunate, some people leave firearms, and that's great to have firearm protection, I'm 100% second amendment, but don't leave it unlocked in a car. I think we had a sheriff step that he killed a couple years ago because of that, so.
Yeah, they leave liability.
Hang on, Sheriff, one second, any questions from the council? Citizens? Yes, uh, Mr. Booth. So, Mr. Booth had the, the question regarding the, um, well, patrols on the bridge is, is the main question right now?
Correct. Like I said, our, uh, 200 and, 821, uh, events in the city, 205, which led to the max, uh, were the max instances in the city, so unfortunately, they, they only resulted in 32 traffic stops, taking citations. But I just asked Deputy Doherty to, uh, enable a, uh, direct patrol for the bridge in the morning. For any particular time, when I had it, more, besides today and to-
I walk from 7:30 to 9 o'clock, and it's unbelievable.
All right, I'll make it from 6 to 8, something.
I mean, I see you at 4:45 every morning, you got about two or three cars on the way there, and I'm golfing, so all of you guys are out there.
Correct, uh, I know our shift, we sit at the-
Give me the radar gun.
I will do it.
Corporal, here's the other thing we can do, and we're not gonna disclose the date, but literally, it's exactly, you know, you can tell me what I'm gonna say right now, right Lynn? Okay, so, we started something, um, not too long ago, where we had special patrols. It was because I was noticing a lot of speeders on Gulf Boulevard, we'd get complaints on 22nd Street, people were coming racing, doing stuff. So we had undercover officers, we pay for this separately, but we've got some money set aside for this, okay? It's been a long time since we've done that, okay? We usually try and keep it till we get to the height of the tourist season and everything, but we're here, we have a citizen who's observing. He's out every day on the bridge, okay? Um, and I, I'll tell you a quote I got one time, okay? I got a call from a citizen the first time we did it, and it's great, because I'm not gonna tell you how we do it, but you'll never know it until you're pulled over, okay? And he goes, you know, that's really sneaky of you guys, you had a, you know, you caught me coming off the bridge, and I was doing like 55. And I'm like, I'm sorry, what were you doing? 55, it's a 35. You know, I, I like going fast too, but that's the wrong place to be going fast, because you come right into a residential neighborhood. So, um, we're not gonna have that. So Lynn, how about it? You know what I'm talking about, okay?
I need a radar gun, I'm there every morning.
Okay.
Our shift, 95 from across the bridge, dismal, so he went to jail.
Good. I've seen a couple high-speed car chases up and down Gulf Boulevard too, there was a couple nights, the sheriff was in hot pursuit in a few cases, so um, it's, it's wild out there, you know, so keep it up, you guys are doing a wonderful job, we appreciate it very, very much. This lady gentleman is Danny Doherty, Corporal, our Deputy Doherty, and, um, Danny Doherty's been our code enforcement officer now for about a year and a half or so? He's up until here now, actually. So we've asked that he come here and give a annual, a monthly report, uh, so that he can hear from the council with any questions that we have, and also hear from the citizens. So the way we're gonna do this, I know we've had some people speak from the seats, I really can't have that, so if we're gonna have anybody wants to speak, we'll have the sheriff, we'll call, call for citizen comments, sheriff will step aside, he can speak into the mic, this way it gets captured on the mic. He'll go first, we'll ask the questions, and then I'll open it up for city, uh, citizen questions and comments. Deputy Doherty?
I'm making you a corporal, whether you like it or not, because we had a corporal behind us here ten years ago. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I apologize for my appearance, I'm covered in cement dust from earlier today, so I apologize. Uh, before I address my, uh, the code sheet and the stats that, um, code-related, I can answer some of your questions. Um, the, uh, traffic enforcement, all of our deputies, including the Bel Air Beach deputy, uh, during the school hours are assigned to monitor the school stop, uh, on Gulf Boulevard and elsewhere. One of those resulted in one of those stolen car, um, arrests. Uh, the vehicle sped, uh, basically blew the red light, uh, with the red sign on the bus. Deputy Ally Exney, um, on day shift early in the morning, made a traffic stop right in front of Bel Air Beach. There were occupied by three, um, subjects. Uh, the car was reported stolen out of county, and everybody went to jail, so that's one of them, one example.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Do you know how that, reported that came in? About the school buses being run?
I'm, I'm assuming, uh-
That lady right in the middle there, Jim Vanscoy. When Captain Liner was here, and we were talking about code enforcement, she came up and she, she was up, I don't, it wasn't me, I was sleeping, but like 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, when the kids get on the bus, she had heard it a couple times with horns beeping, that's what they'll do when they run it. And she goes, I've heard it two or three times, and Captain Liner made a note of it, and obviously got it out to the old, you know, the deputies, and that resulted in, uh, a nice arrest. So, thank you, citizens, and we do listen, and so do our sheriffs, so please continue.
And, uh, before I go further, um, to address Mr. Booth's, um, complaint about the 2601 Bay Shore, the green dumpster. City manager and I have had, uh, communication, and we're definitely working on it. Um, one thing I did, and I apologize to, uh, to Lynn, uh, late Friday, or Friday, right before I did off work, um, and over the weekend, I, I received a phone call from the contractor, apparently a new contractor, I'm not sure if you've got that information, but I wanted to get with it today before I came today, we just got busy. Um, this, uh, this contractor, I've got his information, um, he's dealing with his sister, apparently the one that's controlling the property that lives out of state. He's very motivated to get everything done, uh, he's gonna be working on the permitting process, coming in and doing what he's been doing otherwise. Um, I, I became involved on October 6th, when there was a dumpster without a cover on it, which still ordered this violation. Um, nothing courtesy notice, no avail, because nobody's there. Uh, somehow he got the information, uh, that there was a violation notice on the door on a vacant house. He, um, in a timely manner, put a cover on the dumpster, and he's working on trying to get his house, uh, back in its shape. So we should see some progress on that, and, uh, I just wanted to update on that. Okay, Lynn, I'll get with you about that contract information, so you can expect them coming in, hopefully, in the very near future, so. Okay. Um, I just noticed that, uh, on my activity sheet that you have, and I apologize, um, the last pages, the dates are marked out, or just, like I said, there was a printing issue, I'll make sure that's corrected, uh, for the next month or the month thereafter. If you see that, I should be up the dates on-
Yeah, no, it's, it's limited, it looks like you don't have a wide enough column range, so.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll look into that, so. Through the month of October, so we started our 20 hours, um, a week, from eight hours a week. And, uh, I can break it down, when basically, we had 101, um, new violations. Uh, 57 of those were corrected that day. What I do from that point on, I follow up, I'm communicating with the citizens. Out of those 101, out of the remaining ones, um, I solved 55, um, during that month. There were 55, uh, those that I did follow-ups on, 41 of those, uh, resulted in closure. So it's a constant, uh, I've got open cases, and communicating with the citizens, and trying to get every result as quickly as I can. Out of those 101, I broke down in the columns, you say yes, C, the letter C, that means citizen complaint. And there were a total of six new citizen complaints started, um, October. Um, but a lot of those Cs in that column are in the categories of follow-ups. So even though it's a follow-up, it's citizen, uh, basic complaint, just for your information, so you can see that a little bit on this spreadsheet. So I know that's concerning to, to everyone, how many citizen complaints are compared to proactive enforcement. And then, to break down, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information in this spreadsheet, um, which can be broken down in various ways, but during the month of October, uh, the four major categories of, of, uh, activity, uh, consist of, uh, the most were permit checks, which I initiate myself, I see, uh, work being done in a house, I'll make sure that the permit, uh, posted on the property, and it's, they're working, doing what these should be doing according to the permit. 14, uh, 16, 16 of those residents had proper permits. I had to do follow-ups on three of them, where they had to go get a copy of the permit, or they were still in the process, which they did. Uh, two of the three complied, there's ones that love standing, where for whatever reason, he's just not producing the property, which I'm dealing with. But that's, uh, that's my, that's probably my, my, my most significant item of activity compared to everything else. Uh, the next significant is landscaping, uh, issues, and a total of 14 of those, they're landscaping related. I can break them down into like seven different categories, the most are basically, uh, overgrown grass and weeds exceeding seven inches in height. And, um, I'm pretty successful, uh, in getting, um, closure on that. Um, out of those, um, out of those, there were just five of them a month, and required me like nine different follow-ups to get people to comply, and they did. The, and in that category, landscaping, uh, breaks down into things, one is visibility. You come out to Gulf Boulevard, and you can't see the upcoming bicycles or runners because the bush is too, too, uh, thick. And, uh, within a couple of days, the gentleman cut it, looks pretty good, so. Other ones are overgrown hedges, um, there were two cases where there were hazardous trees, uh, that, uh, people complained about dead trees, they were afraid of the trees falling on their houses, and, uh, it took a little time for, this was, you know, bigger projects, for the property owner to, uh, to acquire the landscaping to get those down, but they, they complied, uh, to secure them. And the next item, uh, of significance would be, uh, parking on grass or landscaping. A lot of residents, um, uh, will park on their grass or, um, shell, uh, landscaping, or rock landscaping. And, uh, a lot of them don't, uh, don't realize it's a violation, and I'll communicate with them, and, uh, if there's a repeat violation, we'll, we'll, one of them will actually, uh, receive a citation, because I think if I'd done it third time, I'd be warned, and we went to citation. Primarily, I mean, the majority of people comply, and they, they understand the ordinance. And then finally, the most significant, then would be dumpsters without covers on it. Um, again, that one probably the Bay Shore, where I saw the green dumpster, and pointed that out as well, and, uh, we're trying to work with the, uh, property owner to get the compliance. And that's pretty much it.
I have a few questions for you, and Corporal, if this is yours, or maybe it's both of yours, just jump in, okay? Um, you know, our city's concerned about parking on the grass, but, you know, cars off the street, and I don't want cars to park on the grass. That's again, it's our code, it's unsightly, it's terrible, our kid city doesn't go for that. But we got a much greater problem, and I don't see regular enforcement. We have landscape vehicles and delivery trucks that routinely park in the turn lane on Gulf Boulevard. We have been given excuses like, our trailer's too big, and we can't pull it into the gigantic oceanfront estate across the, across the street. I'm sorry, maybe you should bring a smaller trailer, okay? Someone's gonna get- Okay? Someone's going to get killed. We have personally experienced trying to make the turn onto our street, trying to get into the turn lane, and you've got this gigantic landscaping trailer before. You can't make the turn anymore. And if you do make the turn, you're going blind. I don't know whether it comes in as code or regular police, and it's not just our city. I remember seeing newspaper articles in the Bee that, you know, this is in Redding Town. This is, it's all up and down Gulf Boulevard. And, you know, these are not small places across the street. I understand it's a quick delivery, but, you know, when you're going, those turn lanes are there for a reason. You're not supposed to park and block a traffic lane. That's a major fine. And what are we doing about it before someone gets killed?
And I know exactly what you're talking about. Um, I could address that with a command staff reference enforcement. I, and I, I work different, uh, beach communities as well and I communicate with my, my fellow deputies who are doing the same. And there's always delivery drivers that's, that's doing that, um, all the way up through entire beach communities. And then I, I know you're talking about with the landscapers where they're claiming, you know, they can't look anywhere else and they're blocking driveways or whatever. This is kind of, they think it's the lesser of evils. Um, so, um, we can look further into that and, uh, see what we can do. Well, I think that's, that's what the city wants us to do.
Well, I mean, I, I can't, I'm, we don't, the council doesn't direct you, the city manager, whereas throwing this information out there, but it's not the first time we've called. I know other people have called on it. The excuses that you usually get from the landscapers that are literally blocking the lane, you know, "We can't get in the gate." Well, then you don't get your loan cut, okay? These are gigantic driveways. I could put my driveway twice into their driveway. I can pull a trailer in there and I don't drive one regularly. It's not hard. Then they sometimes say, "Well, we'll just park in Beller Beach." No, you won't do that, okay? The landscapers work in Beller Beach and park in Beller Beach. Can't park in Beller Beach and walk across the street. That's inappropriate. Okay? Um, that's that. The other question I have for you, uh, deputy, is in terms of what this, you may need from this council, any issues that you're having, is there anything that you need from this council, any problems that you're experiencing that the council needs to help you with?
I should control the price of gas.
You need to go to Washington.
No, okay, we're, uh, we're just trying to work the, uh, the new hours of, uh, eight hours, twenty hours a week. And then, uh, close the demand to, to accomplish what needs to be done.
At some point, I'll ask you how that twenty is, whether it's too much, too little, or just right, but I think it's too early probably at this point to tell, I would guess.
Right.
I mean, I do note that there's a lot more code issues up here that have been found with more time, which makes sense, so. Any questions on council?
I have, I have one. Um, obviously we have a new additional turn lane, um, going from Gulf on to the Coliseum. I've, I've had two residents reach out to me and say, "It's not going to work." Um, so I did an experiment the other day, how can they, the inside or the middle lane, and, and made a left turn to where I would have to merge. There is not enough room. I was, I was going to wait and bring this up during your, uh, your time, but, uh, there is not enough room to make that left turn. And I'm wondering if you've noticed the same thing, that, that it's just, you have to turn so sharp to make that left. If you're in the left lane, you naturally drift right into the merge lane. Um, I almost got clobbered. I know it's going to happen. Do you think that that was the best fix?
I, I thought the, I thought the, uh, just as long as the other motorists are being courteous and they let you and you let, you let in, but we know that's not always the case. Uh, on our perspective, I was wondering, who, who, was that, uh, was that DOT that just did that on their own?
No, I believe our city manager was in contact with them, right? They didn't do that. They studied it, but you, we, we approached them, right?
Yeah, we, we got the intersection report and the city council got it and, uh, the county did that for us. And, uh, part of their, uh, plan, one of the, one of the things with the intersection report was to take that, uh, island out and the trees and just kind of uphold to, to look at that further. Uh, I know there's some flashing the light issues with, you know, it's stage red now. I've got a call in to the county about that, so. Okay, it looks to me like either you, where the, the thick line is, where you, where you tell the cars to stop at, it, it probably needs to be moved back towards the island. Um, I think that that, that might help, help the problem. There's just not enough, there's not enough room to make that left turn without crossing over into the adjacent lane.
That actually, that actually makes sense. And I was hoping why didn't, you know, can I understand the reasons why they did that? And then I'm, I'm on the fence like you, to see if it's actually effective or not. And I'm just, every time I take a turn, I try both just to see what it's like and then what the, and of course, uh, in conservatory, when you get congested traffic making that turn, so.
Yeah, okay. I was, I was just looking for an opinion. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Any other council questions? Citizens, do you have any questions for our code officer or our deputy? I'm sorry, our corporal. Yes, Mike Kelly, please come up and then we'll just ask the sheriffs just to step aside briefly and then they'll answer the question in the microphone.
I'm Mike Kelly, twenty-seven forty High Biscuits Drive West. Um, I have a question. If you, uh, Deputy Doherty, you said that you do check for permits to make sure there's construction permits from the county for these jobs. Do you see any construction? Do you ever interact with the actual subcontractors on the job?
Okay, Deputy Doherty, I want to have you answer on the mic. Is that, is that the question? Mike, Mr. Kelly?
The reason I'm asking that is I'm vice chairman of Penous County Construction Licensing Board. We have a full staff of investigators that go around and just check with contractors that are out on the streets, parked, doing work at various locations all over the county. If they're found not to have licenses, if they're found not to have number of license numbers on their vehicles, first fine's five hundred dollars. If they don't have a license and they don't have, um, numbers on their cards, it's a thousand dollars. Our investigators are spread thin, but we worked with the sheriff for an awfully long time and we thought we'd give it to you a hundred percent. And I, I don't know if you are interacting at all with my investigators on the licensing.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Deputy Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Actually, um, I would like to give you contact information to, I know I love to interact. I have not yet specifically interacted with the investigators, but I'm constantly interacting with contractors, the subcontractors. A big one today, uh, they were tearing a driveway out along the side. There's a big, there's a big trailer. Uh, the guy's sawing the, the driveway through rebar. It's, it's a total mess. Of course, I'm going to stop out and check with them. And, uh, he, the contractor was, uh, had just left and he mistakenly had the permit with him in his possession in the truck. Um, I advise him it had to be posted on the property. So he's going to have it posted tomorrow. He just, he, and I was able to get that information and verify that he did actually have the correct permit. So I'm constantly doing that, but the more resources I have to communicate...
I need to exchange information, yes.
Purges are a board is to find unlicensed contractors. An awful lot of contractors, because labor is, is very difficult to find, are using unlicensed contractors. If those guys know that in Beller Beach, they're being checked to find out if, if you guys are watching them and then our investigators, I will start sending them to Beller Beach, then we're going to find that the contractors themselves will not go using unlicensed contractors. And those guys will be fined immediately on sight. I didn't know if you ever had the authority to say, "You better make sure you're licensed."
Okay, great, thank you.
I've actually sat through some of those hearings and been quite impressed, so.
Great. Any other questions by citizens? Thank you both. Thanks.
I have one for the thing not code-related, tomorrow code-related. Deputy Ally Epstein, uh, got off work at six p.m. and she wanted me to relay her statement. Penous County Sheriff's Office does a fundraiser. I'm not trying to solicit money from anybody. Trust me, that's not me. But this is incredible, a very small, vibrant, all the stars. Um, it's a, it's an event down in Fort Soto on the first Saturday of every December. Um, and it basically raises money for victims, children, victims of, um, children, victims of crimes. Extremely needy, um, uh, kids that will never have a Christmas. Um, so, uh, our deputies go shop for them, um, several weeks before Christmas and we deliver to the parents. They give us a list and so forth. Um, one other way is if, uh, if someone would be inclined, uh, other than just donating money, they can actually adopt the family. Um, they work with our staff in our, um, victim advocate, uh, division and, uh, where they have more personal involvement with, with assisting the family if they're able to do so. What I'll do, um, you can always contact me, but I've got a contact number here. I'll leave...
There's a table back there. There's a presentation table. Maybe if we have a few, maybe you can leave at the front counter for the city hall.
Absolutely. The event itself, um, down in Fort Soto, it's basically bicycle walking. The minority family walks, but they don't have to be an athlete to do it. Um, it's, it's fully catered, uh, down before. Um, our helicopter flies over Santa Claus and brings our toys to all the kids. I lined up probably two hundred feet. Um, it's, the weather's incredible. It's great outdoor event for such a good cause. I just wanted to...
Thank you. We'll see what we can do about publicizing that for you. Okay, thank you. That takes care of the presentation by the sheriff's office and the code officer. Uh, item four is the presentation of Disability Achievement Center. Um, we have Jody Armstrong, she's former mayor. She told me and she's director of the outreach for the Beach Mobility Mats. So without further ado, Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council members. Uh, last week I did a presentation to the Mary Island Government Council and Vice Mayor invited me to speak before you today. I represent Disability Achievement Center under director of outreach. We're the Center for Independent Living, so at Penous and Pasco. We serve people of all ages and all disabilities. Our goal is to overcome barriers to independence. One in seven people have a mobility impairment. One in seven people cannot get to more beaches today. For nearly three years, uh, actually December eighth will be the three-year mark. The, the Penous County Council for Persons with Disabilities was launched. It is a council, we're an advisory council to the board of county commissioners for all things disability-related. I'm not chair of that committee. The very first meeting, Treasure Island brought their, brought their Mobimatt, their beach access mat out. Um, they did a presentation, showed the benefits of it, the ease of care, and it made a lot of sense because it enabled not only people who use wheelchairs to access the beach, it's anyone with a mobility impairment. If you have a bad knee, a bad hip, you're aging into disability, maybe you got vertigo, you're not steady on your feet, moms with strollers. Everybody in Treasure Island uses this mat. So for the last nearly three years, I've been advocating up and down the beaches, trying to encourage, uh, municipalities and the county to install these, uh, access mats where they make the most sense. And, um, earlier this summer, another organization called Help Us Gather, uh, it's another organization that works with people with disabilities. They, one of their members got a modeling job for surf style surf shopping for Water Beach and this young gentleman uses a wheelchair. And they did the photo shoot on the Mobimatt in Treasure Island. And when Help Us Gather found that they thought that was the neatest thing since sliced bread. And they had, uh, Bay News and I did a piece on them. And so I called the founder because I, I've been working on this project for a long time and I says, "You know, Robin, you just got to get people out to the beach. You know, how many times you get a family coming down from up north to see grandma and grandpa? Grandma and grandpa will stand on the, uh, seawall and say, 'See you later.'" Just like you guys who can't even go out there without an umbrella. That just, that blows me away. Speaking of people with disabilities, whoa, I actually, I do a lot of that one, but I won't. Um, so we got to talking and she says, "Well, you know, we have a family foundation and this kind of project for access can really make a difference for us here in Penous County. Why don't I fund them?" I don't know. I'm a grand writer. When I have somebody saying, "Why don't I fund them?", I never get that. Well, the press release went out and we found the interest. Because everyone that I went through and said, "Hey, would you please put one down?", I now am able to go and say, "Hey, let's do this now." Each of you has a mat in front of you and, uh, there are currently four access mats, uh, in Penous County and fifteen proposed in Penous and four in Pasco. The former foundation will pay for all of them. And, uh, and including the permit. So right now we have, uh, we had a, um, a meeting, a Zoom meeting with all of the interested parties, uh, earlier in October. Uh, it included anyone who had already raised their heads and, "Yes, please count me in. I'd like to have a mat on my beach." And, uh, FDPC, FWC, we had representatives, uh, from Nick De Sette's office, from Linda Cheney's office. Everybody's on board with this so that now the permitting process is not over burdensome. I even have an engineer who's brought me to do these ones for a boner. So we've got all the pieces in place and we're walking through the steps now of the permitting process. Madeira Beach is ready to go. And what I'm lining up is, Madeira Beach had some questions on there, so they were waiting for the questions to come back because that would give us insight as to what else they, what else FWC or FDPC might want. So now that they have their answers, we're working through everyone else and, uh, we should see those permit applications going in with it by the end of the year. Everyone should have a permit applications in. The permitting process is going to take some time. You already told us it's going to be months. So we're trying very hard. So my question for Beller Beach is, do you have an access point that you would like a beach mat on? And if so, all you have to do is send an email to info@helpusgather.org and say, "Hey, we'd like to be included." That's all they're asking. You have to ask. And the foundation will, uh, they, they understand the process. They understand what we're going through, what we're doing, all the steps that we're taking. And the way that it'll work is that once the permits are approved, automatically the, the foundation will write a check to the city, to write a check to the, uh, um, the map provider. And that's really all it's going to be. The only thing they want, you take care of the map for as long as it's, it's in use, which should be five to seven years. You have to take it out during hurricanes and each one of these roll-up mats is a C-sections about forty-eight pounds. And, uh, they have to put a sign out, run saying that this map is for mobility purposes and to include three logos for Disability Achievement Center, Help Us Gather, and former foundation. That's it. I've never had the needs for credit in my life. So, um, and if it's not right for you guys, I understand. It's okay, but I do encourage because if we're all on accident roads away from being a person with a disability. And I moved here because of that sand. Most of us moved here because of that sand. And I would really love to see everyone who can to be able to get out there. So there's lots of apps for everyone. I'm going to ask one. And you've got my card. Reach out to me. I will work with you wherever you step away.
First, thank you for coming and you're doing a great, great thing here and, um, it sounds very exciting. Um, we can't just give you an answer tonight, but we'll have a work session coming up in a couple of weeks. And I'm going to ask that we put this on. Um, we can get a consensus right there. We're only asking for, you're only asking for an email and, but if there may be other questions, we probably will be able to actually bring it for a resolution until December. But that's not that long, so that grant will still be here in case, okay? Um, we have one public beach access. We have several beach walkovers, but our main beach access is Morgan Park. Now, I'm mayor of this city, but there's another city across the street that makes up nineteen blocks that Beller Beach uses. That's Bel Air Shore. They have commission meetings usually later in the month. That's what we were talking about earlier, the Sixth Street, uh, the, um, Twelfth Street, Nineteenth Street access points. All the Beller Beach residents who live in those areas use that, so they may be interested in that also. I'm not sure what kind of a sale you're going to have to get them, but it's worth making that presentation there too so that all the citizens, no matter where they may be in the city, you know, don't have to travel all up to Morgan Park because that may be inconvenient. I don't have a picture of this. Do you have a picture of something that you might be able to send us? I'm not sure what they look like, you know? I've never seen, I don't think I've seen one.
I do, yeah. Um, actually Mobimatt is the vendor that we have been working with. That poor man, I drove him up and down these beaches for the last two years measuring and walking and, and giving me quotes. So we pretty much know where, what, what's, what's what and they have a really good website. It's in writing and it's...
That's Mobimatt.
Mobimatt, yeah, it's at the top of the, uh, top of that.
Uh, council, any other questions?
I'll take questions.
Sure. Citizens? Wow, you are getting, you get easy grants and you get easy questions. That's as good as it gets.
And anything disability related, you're, you're walking right through that fine line. Um, there's Disability Achievement Centers, a center for individuals with disabilities. We are a strong advocate for persons with disabilities and, um, I don't know, I, I, I really believe the beaches should be accessible.
Absolutely. Everybody should have the right to enjoy these beautiful beaches. Any joy in said, though?
Thank you so much. We are going to have, even, even if you don't, if you choose not to, there's still going to be enough to put, you know? Pinellas County, Lake Pinellas County, the most accessible beaches in, in the state. I can't say the world, in the state, New England has quite a few of them. But this is a statewide effort. There are many, many municipal areas around the state that are trying to do this. Naples has done a study, they're trying to put one in every half mile, but they don't have the funding. We are the only county that has the funding. So what we're gonna do, as soon as we get these down, we're going to, there's a thing called water to promote disability tourism. That's a huge industry that's untapped. And we've got the most beautiful beaches around and the most accessible. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your great work. All right, that concludes the regular part here, we're gonna move into the consent agenda. Counsel, we doing okay? Been here going for an hour ten, everybody's all right? Don't hear many issues? Okay, item, we're gonna do items five, six, seven, and eight, all part of the consent agenda. We have approval of the September 20th, 2021 city council work session minutes. These were tabled from the October 4th meeting at my request. There were amendments that were requested today, those were made fine, I'm happy with it. Item six is approval of October 4th, 2021 city council meeting minutes. Then item seven is approval of October 18th, 2021 city council work session minutes. And number eight is approval of city council monthly invoice for, I'm sorry, city attorney monthly invoice for legal services. So we're going to approve items five, six, seven, and eight. First, I need a motion. Motion by Frank Banker.
Second.
Second by Dave Gaddis.
Correction?
Yes.
Item number six, the October 4th meeting. Item number nine, or excuse me, eight, nine, and 10, it says they were moved from the regular agenda. They, they were actually moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. This is pages four and five of the October 4th meeting.
I'm sorry, it says, it says moved to the regular agenda, is that not correct?
No. But then if you go further down, on the next page, on page four, regular agenda. Approval of the September, it says moved from the regular agenda, it was moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Right, so, I'm not sure I'm following what the issue is, so I'm. Is that it?
Page, page four. It said it should be moved from the consent. It was moved to the regular, not moved from the consent. Patty said she could make that correction.
Yeah. It's Natero, Councilmember Natero, the, my issue is that's a consent agenda, we're not even supposed to discuss it. So let me, okay, by order? Hang on, we're gonna get it right, because what we should, if this happens again, please move that item out of the consent agenda. But I'm not gonna get hung up on a technicality here. Does the council have any problem with amending this on a fly like this? This is a minor, this is to just keep the minutes proper. Do we have any objection? We have none, okay, we'll do that. So Patty, you're familiar with exactly the changes that have to happen, right?
Yes, I've already changed it.
Okay, perfect. All right, so other than those changes, we're good? All right then, so the motion right now is to approve the consent agenda. And that is items five, six, seven, and eight, I'll read it again, yes, vote, we'll approve this. Approval of the September 20th, 2021 city council work session meeting minutes. Item six, approval of October 4th, 2021 city council meeting minutes. Item seven, approval of October 18th, city council work session minutes. And item eight, approval of city attorney monthly invoice for legal services. I'll take a voice vote, all in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? We have seven to zero passes. Move into the regular agenda, item nine. This is consideration of appointment to the Board of Adjustment. This is the city council, vote by ballot to fill the vacant board seat, we have an applicant, Tony Gatliff. First off, is Mr. Gatliff here? Mr. Gatliff's here, are you gonna want to be heard, will you like to be heard? Okay, hang on, let me get the motion first, and then I'm gonna invite you up, okay? First, will somebody make this motion?
So who?
Moved by Dave Gaddis, second.
Second.
Second by Robin Aki. Counsel, will you dispense with your comments until after we hear from Mr. Gatliff? Mr. Gatliff, you have the floor.
Hi, Tony Gatliff, 2228 Denado Drive. I'm really just here to help the community. I think we should all do whatever we can to participate. And I've got about 40 years doing scientific research here in Pinellas County. Cities, counties, state attorneys, private companies. I think I can bring that knowledge to the Board of Adjustment.
Sit, hang right there, I'm gonna see if there's any questions from the council while you're here, okay? This way you can answer back and forth, okay? Counsel, do we have any questions?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I know Mr. Gatliff, and I think he would be a great addition to the Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Gatliff, I don't know you. I've seen some writings years ago, and it concerned me a little bit. And I, you know, I, I wouldn't say it's something that I would say, I, I certainly, I see your background, you certainly have an excellent background, I think you'd be fine for the board. I am a little concerned about some of the writings. We hear earlier when we were speaking about this whole beach umbrella issue and what was going on?
Yes, it was.
And I'm reading some of the stuff that you wrote, and it's directly contrary to what the law and facts are. So I want you to understand, and you might know this already, but I want to say this for anybody who serves on this board, Mike Kelly's here and he'll confirm this, I know I'm right on it. This is what's called quasi judicial board. You don't report to us, actually the next line of review after you make your decisions, court, they look at what you do. So if an applicant comes before the Board of Adjustment, your decision is final, you speak for the city. That's why you're a judicial board. And that calls marrying the facts to the law. And I, my concern is, is some of the stuff that I'm reading here is directly, it's incorrect. Some of the stuff that you posted out on Facebook, okay? And I'll tell you, the beach umbrella is basically your idea that the city can make whatever law it wants, that's not correct. And you heard about the constitutionality, you heard about, I mean, it gets even more detailed when we start getting into the, what the deeds themselves say in terms of our perpetual rights. Then you get into what's, this whole, this whole issue, which isn't even formed yet in the court, about this whole constitutional right to the wet sand and for recreation, that they don't, you know, do it, it's not simple. And the only reason why, and then there was another one, another comment on, on when the city cut down, butchered the sea oats, which still haven't grown back, and we said there was no laws violated. Well, I've got the DDP report, there wasn't law violated, okay? We're not supposed to cut them that well. And it was an error, a bad error, and it's never gonna happen again. And I don't want to give misinformation to the citizens, I don't doubt that you want to help citizens. But I will caution you that, you know, what we're going on is that this board, everything that you do on this board is subject to review. So if somebody doesn't get their variance, and they don't like what they say, or somebody writes something, you know, now the city goes to, well, you know, they go to take the city to court and it starts looking ugly. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Those comments are on social media, yes, everybody shares their opinions and frankly, they're first amendment right to speak their mind. But I appreciate your comments.
Counsel? I'm gonna come to the, to the citizens right after counseling. Any other counsel comments or questions for Mr. Gatliff? Now let's open it up to the citizens, we have Mike Kelly. Mr. Gatliff, I'm just gonna have you step just right in that doorway there, let's have Mike Kelly speak, and then if you need to answer it or read about it, you get the mic again.
Mayor?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gunn would like to speak when you're ready.
Okay, I'll take him, what we'll do is I'll take him right after this and then I'll go back to other citizen comments. Mic's here, standing here, so let's have, have Mike, if Glenn doesn't have a problem with that. Mr. Gunn? No problem? Okay, go ahead.
Once again, I'm Mike Kelly, I'm speaking in this capacity as the current chairman of Board of Adjustment. I'm here actually to let you know that on a personal level and a pleasure level, I've, I've known Tony Gatliff for over 27 years. I had the privilege of serving with him and participating with him on a very successful men's softball league back in the 90s. Tony is a very dependable man, he's a very dedicated man, and he's a man of character. So I'm here to endorse this appointment to our Board of Adjustment. And our Board of Adjustment is also a board that has to be dependable, has to be credible, and has to be careful. Because of what, what the issues are before us. It is very respectful of our citizens, and I would, I would hope that you do appoint Mr. Gatliff, that he would be a good addition, a respectful person. His character as well, naturally, thank you.
Very well, thank you. Want to disagree with any of that, Mr. Gunn?
No, I would add that I think that's a desperate basement.
That's, no one's gonna ask you, what position did you play, so you have a good arm.
Dirt face.
Dirt face. Okay, any other citizen comments? Uh, yes, now we have Glenn coming. You might want to turn that up, Patty, because it was a little hard to hear that. Glenn, you have the floor.
Thank you, yeah, I just want to say that Tony Gatliff has my trust and confidence. I think he's a, a person of character, and I think some of the comments he made on social media were a direct response to a lot of misstatements and misconceptions and, and just vile statements. I, I'm very surprised, while I agree with Mayor Manzo's comment, and as well as Mr. Kelly's comments, that board members must remain impartial. I'm surprised we're having this conversation now when it's speaking, when, when a city member of a board was on social media, putting in on events taking place and espousing a lot of misperceptions and misinformation. And again, I'm just very surprised we're having this conversation now. While we're sitting a new member, and we never had this conversation when we had this issue as well up in the root form. So I, I'm fully in support of bringing aboard Mr. Gatliff. I think he is a person of character, and he has my full trust and confidence as a member of the Board of Adjustment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Mr. Gatliff, do you have anything to add on that? I, I am gonna say something, but you might want to sneak after I go, but it's up to you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, everybody has the right to give information. But this is attributed to you, if it's not you, please tell me. Tony Gatliff, Bel Air Beach, didn't the umbrella hoopla teach us that the land to the Minai Watermark is private land? That's not correct. If so, then no laws were broken, this is in regard to the, the sea oats. The, the, it has nothing to do with the Minai Watermark. It has to do with what's known as the coastal construction control line, which in our city is pretty much equal to the retaining wall. Which is why there was no violation on Sixth Street, but there was partial violation, a lot of violation on 12th Street, complete violation on 19th Street, and complete violation on Morgan Street. I've got the Florida DDP report here, and I'm not gonna read it into the record, but it talks about the violations over here. So, again, anybody has the right to write whatever they want, okay? But if we're going to help the citizens, which I don't doubt that you really do want to do, okay? I want to help them with the right information. That was bad, what happened. That was destruction of our beautiful seacoast, and it better never happen again. I reported it, and I'll report it again next time. And I, and told from the DDP, we will not get a break if it happens again. Those sea oats still haven't grown back. And although Sixth Street was behind the coastal construction line, because that retaining wall is actually in front of the dunes, if you go there, and I was just there Friday because I was enjoying the high surf, and let me tell you, the erosion that's there is, is significant. Those sea oats hold the grasses together, and right after those things were cut, we had another storm, wiped out a lot of sand, and that sand has never come back. So I just want to make sure the residents get the right information. This report is public record, it's sitting in Pati Gentry, has its, from the Florida DDP, it's addressed to me from July 29th. So I don't, you go on social media, write whatever you want, but again, if you want to help the citizens, might particularly be on the board, now you'd be a representative of our city. You know, I'm just asking that, make sure we get our facts straight, okay?
Most of my comments were in response to others who also didn't necessarily have their facts.
I don't doubt that. I've seen some of the backdoor, next door stuff.
Thank you for your consideration.
But thank you for your interest here. Counsel, do we have any other questions for Mr. Gatliff before we take up our discussion and vote? Mr. Gatliff, have a seat, we're gonna, we don't have to go and send this out to the election division, we do this right in front of you here. Any other counsel questions before we call the vote? Patty has given us, Patty, can we use the ones that are inside our, our binder, so inside our binder? We have a vote, and now I'll make sure I can say this properly. We have one person on the ballot, this isn't like North Korea though, it doesn't say you have to vote for one, you may vote for up to one. That person is Tony Gatliff, yes, vote, we'll get him on, he needs the majority of this council to be, actually he needs four votes to be on. Please vote yes or no, and hand your ballot to Patty. Lynn, we always do this, we'll just have to tally the votes, we have another count. She's just doing this to build suspense, Mr. Gatliff, she knows who won already, but.
Councilmember Aki voted for Mr. Gatliff. Councilmember Banker voted for Mr. Gatliff. Councilmember Natero voted for Mr. Gatliff. Councilmember Swope voted for Mr. Gatliff. Vice Mayor Gaddis did not vote.
Wait, he has to vote.
Let me look, I've got it.
She distracted me.
It's the hinky chat.
You know that, Mr. Gaddis, right? Go ahead, and how did Mr. Gaddis vote after he voted here?
Vice Mayor Gaddis voted for Mr. Gatliff. And Mayor Manzo voted for Mr. Gatliff.
Even with the questionable vote of the vice mayor, you win seven to zero. Congratulations. You are, and you know, I saw that we had a thing a little while ago where the city attorney had given some instructions and stuff to one of the groups, and I think you were on the group, because I was looking at it, about sunshine law and stuff like that. You, I think you're familiar with that, right? The sunshine laws, if you can't speak outside the, about board business, like you can't speak to Mike anymore about the board, other than we got a meeting on Tuesday or something like that. If there's any questions, Fred Riley here is the city attorney, you can always ask him, but it's always better to ask in advance than to do something and find out that you violated the law. Florida's very strict essentially, you can't talk about anything other than like, do we have a meeting on Tuesday? You can't say, hey, I really think that's a great idea, we should give that guy the doc, you can't do that, okay? Mr. Kelly?
Councilmember Gunn, I'm sorry, would you hold that up again? Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
I didn't count Mr., uh, Councilmember Gunn, he voted for.
Really, this is like Broward County here. Okay, so Councilmember Gunn, how do you vote?
He, he held up his vote, it's for Mr. Gatliff.
Mr. Gatliff, okay, so it is seven to zero. The second corrected vote still has you as the winner, you only need four anyway, so even if someone challenges it, we got it. So still, congratulations. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, your comment was correct about sunshine laws and proper training. We had in March, as most of you know, a Board of Adjustment training session. Since that time, we have, the council has appointed three new members to Board of Adjustment. It might be worthwhile for us as a board, then if you and I can do another training session in the next six months, it, it will be good for the council, the Board of Adjustment members that have already heard it once, but for three new city members, it will give them more confidence in the upcoming hearings.
See if I can dispense with this right here, okay? Counsel, he's made a proposal, we don't need a resolution for this, I think it's a great idea, I don't think anybody's gonna disagree, but if we do, does anybody have an issue with, he has three new members, and so that's almost the majority, we have.
We have seven.
Seven on the board, right, so, yeah.
Three, three of them have been appointed since March, actually since May, after our training session in March. So I just think it might be strong to do it again. Fred, if you want to.
Hang on, let me get you the approval first, okay? So does anybody have a problem with that? So now we can, Fred, if you would, work out with Mr. Kelly and with the city manager, what a convenient time. I would like to go make sure this done, that we can get all three people there, so whatever we. people there, so whatever we have to do to make the three work, whether it be a Saturday morning or whatever, Fred loves working Saturday mornings, so...
We'll make it work for everybody.
Thank you.
Those three, I'm sure will be there.
Good suggestion, thanks. All right, let's move on to item number 10. Oh boy. All right, Consideration of Ordinance 2102, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballard Beach, Florida Providing for the Amendment of Chapter 86 Signs of the City Code of Ordinances Providing for incorporation of recitals Providing for the Amendment of Chapter 86 Signs of the City Code of Ordinances Providing for a copy to be kept on file Providing for severability Providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with and providing for effective date It doesn't say here, but Patty correctly found along this in the first reading, correct? First reading, we need two before we can pass it. First, I'll need a motion.
So do Dave Gaddis.
Second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Notaro, Dave Gaddis. I will defer to the city attorney. Fred Riley? I defer to you, any comments on this? And by the way, folks, just to give you a quick background, we have been debating this in work sessions for only five months now, so with that, Mr. Riley?
In the last workshop, the city council discussed this at length, it was one of a number of, as the mayor said, one of a number of times it's been discussed. I made several changes to it that came out of that workshop. There are a new definition for activated component and a new definition for activated signs and I changed the reference elsewhere in the Chapter 86 to activated signs, so that part has been clarified. There was a lengthy discussion at the workshop about, that was led by city manager Reeves, about the actual size of the signs and the, so that amount was, or that was quantified and the signs will not exceed, the temporary signs will not exceed four square feet. And those, there was another change that Leslie Notaro requested, where there was a sentence that had been repeated twice, so one of those was deleted and I really don't think there was that much more that we made in the layup revisions. So, this is, you know, other than those couple things, I want to say there was one more very minor point, but those are major things that have changed and that's, it's now in the court for the city council to address on for a screening.
First, I want to thank you, Mr. Riley, and I want to thank the city council. We have went around and around on this thing, not because it's an easy issue, because it's a very difficult issue. Side issue is the First Amendment right, okay? First Amendment rights obviously are, you know, the cornerstone, there's a reason why it's the First Amendment and not the Seventh Amendment. And you have to be careful in what you restrict and how you restrict it and this was the best compromise that the city council was able to come up with and walk that fine line. And the problem with walking the fine line, as Mr. Riley has said and as I've said as attorneys, you can't see the line, the line's all squiggly and the line's all gray and it's dark at night and the courts are all over the place with this stuff. So, I think a council member asked, you know, "Does this guarantee that we're not going to ever have an issue, you know, with somebody bringing a legal issue?" No, it doesn't guarantee anything, somebody could always make that challenge. Fred Riley cites a whole bunch of case laws that went, you know, to various appellate courts and supreme courts that are all on sign ordinance and stuff. So, this is the best attempt and I don't want anyone, and this is the best attempt of this council, and I don't want anyone, I'll say picked on, if it doesn't work out, if three years from now somebody says, "Hey, there's a problem in there," that's not any one of the people's fault that did this, you cannot bulletproof this. This is way better than what we had, okay? What we had is a problem, in fact, it was so bad, we actually suspended the enforcement of it. So, this is a great compromise, I will be voting for it and I encourage everyone else to do the same. Anyone else? No, I have a comment. Yeah, I'll go with Frank and then go to second round, Dave. Okay, Frank?
I appreciate the work you did, Mr. Riley, on this, I understand your argument, Mr. Mayor, the problem is it grew from six pages to 26 pages. It's just too conoluted for me, I can't support it. I understand, there could be litigation coming forward, but there could be litigation on everything that we do, so, again, no offense, Mr. Riley, I think you did a great job, but...
Let me take it.
Okay. Anyone, first round, then we'll come back to Dave Gaddis.
No, I was just going to add that this is many, many months in the works, many, many hours we've spent on this. I know it looks a little overwhelming, and it is, it takes a long time to get through this. However, in the event that something does come up in the future, I believe that anyone would look at this documentation and see, we tried everything we could to satisfy the needs of the city and our sign ordinance, so I'm for it.
Anyone else? Counsel, I'm going to go to the citizens. No other counsel, like, Glenn Gunn, I'm not sure if we can always hear him. Does he want to say anything, Patty? Nope? He's not holding up a hand, okay, but, so we will go to citizens then. Citizens, any comments on the sign ordinance? John Hanzig, please, here.
I've read through this, yeah, it's taken a lot of time, it's taken a lot of hard work and as previously mentioned, it's written wrong, but my concern is, there's a couple of things in here that I question. In section 86-64, permitted temporary signs...
Give us a second to get to that, okay?
Sure.
Page, it's easier just to give us the page?
It's on page 21 of your packet.
21. Okay.
It's a subparaphrase, Charlie, placement standard. Temporary signs and support structures are to be posted not less than eight feet from the back of the curb of a street that should not be posted on or over a public driveway or easement. I get that this, it talks about the boulevard out here and Gulf Boulevard, the Causeway and Gulf Boulevard. That part, without actually taking a tape measure and measuring from the back of the concrete curb, eight feet in, puts it on the sidewalk. For sure, if not, on private property. Okay? Go to the next page. 22, and it would be...
Gunn, do you mind if I just hold that for, I'd like, best person to ask on this, if you don't mind trying to, you just brought something up because, you know, usually, you know, most of the streets do not have sidewalks, so you just take, when I did the election, you take three paces off the curb and seem to keep me out of Lynn's hair for most of them, so, but what about this, when we do have a sidewalk, how do we handle this one, Mr. Reeves?
Typically, for us, we just use the back of the sidewalk for both...
Eight feet from the back of the sidewalk?
Yes, typically. That keeps it, because it's in, the way the code reads, you're not supposed to put it in the wrong way, so if it comes from eight foot back of the sidewalk, it's not in the right way. And on the side streets, we use eight foot from the back of the curb, because some...
Oh, that's, now what this says, on the next page, says eight feet from the pavement, asphalt.
Where is that, Mr. Hanzig?
It's under location. Persons who live on streets other than Gulf and Causeway Boulevard may place temporary signs and shall be not, shall not be located closer than eight foot to the paved roadway and shall be placed only on the public property. Now, there's an easement on everybody's property, right?
No, that's, we're, I'll tell you how I do it, and I think, it depends how we're going to consider the valley curb, I can't get eight feet from the valley curb, I think that's the way we write this, but you really aren't supposed to be driving the valley curb, but it's not the pavement, but, you can say valley curb, I don't...
Yeah, in C it says back of the curb of the street, that's what it says. Placement standard, eight feet from the back of the curb.
Right, but then, Mr. Hanzig alerted us to...
You go to page 22, location, and under, the subparaphrase two or three...
Well, this is actually an exception for the, only for the open house and garage sale signs, so it's not all the other signs that were, but temporary signs. So there's, there's a slight difference for open house and garage sale signs. There is a difference between the two, I don't think they conflict.
So maybe somebody needs to clarify with an upcoming election, because the way I interpret this, you can't have any political signs in the right of way, even in front of City Hall on Election Day, between a sidewalk and a curb. Number two, you can't have them on Gulf Boulevard, because those little wire thingies are not going to penetrate the concrete sidewalk and if you go above the sidewalk, you're on private property. If I want to put a garage sale sign, or I want to put holiday decorations that are temporary in my half moon in front of my house, I got to put them eight foot, that puts them up under the palm trees. You guys need to clarify a little better what you're trying to tell us, because basically, you're saying here you're not going to violate our constitutional rights, but they're extremely limited, the way I read this, when it comes to the actual placement.
That's correct. Okay? And again, I'll speak only for myself, but I'm pretty sure every candidate did this, I didn't hear of any election violations, except there were people who placed stuff in front of City Hall, that's inappropriate. You're not allowed to put stuff on Gulf Boulevard. If you put it on the strip between the sidewalk and the street, it doesn't belong there, that would be a violation even under our old one. If you place it on the grass, and I had many on Gulf Boulevard, and so did other people, you need the owner's permission, every one of those was with the owner's permission, you cannot place it on someone's property, and you had to actually knock on the door and make sure they said it's okay to put it there, so, no, you have no right to place it on anyone's property, or vacant lot for that matter.
No, I clearly understand that, but the way I'm reading this, and I was taught very clearly when I wrote policies and procedures in the military, to read objectively, don't read into it. The way I read this ordinance, it effectively does violate my constitutional rights based on where you can place it.
Well, on page 24, under Political Signs, number two, it says, when you were talking about upcoming political cycle, it says, "All setbacks at four, outbuild of political signs, they may not be less than seven and a one-half feet from the edge of any road surface or not less than two feet from any existing sidewalk adjacent to the private property." Did that cover?
Still puts my, any political sign, I would desire to place in my front yard, just going to put it up in the palm trees. And just to be clear, I would take a measure, a tech measure, either from the, probably do it from the back of the gutter, the concrete gutter, just to be safe from the extra inch, several inches, so that somebody doesn't come along and take it out of my yard, even though it's, that is an easement, but it's still, I paid the taxes on that.
We've always allowed the placement of the easement, okay? Because if you didn't, I remember, I quote Lynn directly, every sign would be like, you know, because I think you have 15, 15 feet in front of every yard or so with easements, so you would actually be 15 feet into, nobody would be able to, you might as well not even have signs, okay? So, it's always been off of the curb, but not to obscure traffic, so I didn't have any, I mean, this to me was clear enough, and we do require, I mean, under 86-64B, which is on page 21, it does talk about, "No temporary signs shall be erected on any property without the authorization of the owner or resident thereof, except as provided here."
I understand.
So I mean, it's, if somebody sticks a sign in somebody's property and without authorization, you just throw it away, I mean...
Right, no, I get, I get that part, I'm just talking about me, the property owner. But again, the way I read this, as it's written, it restricts my constitutional right to freedom of expression, that's all I wanted to say.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, I don't know...
I think I can explain this. I believe that what we've done is we've set a rule where he has no place to put a sign.
Is that because of, that's what I was going to ask, is it because of the, I don't know, I don't, I've driven by it too many times, but I don't remember where the palm trees are, is it because your palm trees are in the way, or is it because, you know...
I have, in my property, I have a rounded driveway, because there's no on-street parking, right, okay? On the backside of that circumference, if you will, is where the palms are, and I have one big one in the center, it's getting taller, but I'll go tomorrow and I'll measure and I'll shoot you an email and I'll tell you just where that would be.
Seven feet off the curb, there should be some room there, hopefully.
It'll be up under the palm trees, trust me.
All right.
I was a precision machine.
I don't doubt it.
Mayor, he's got, you know, I'm aware of John's, and there's a couple other houses, he's got landscaping there.
Right.
Now, to the wings of his yard, there's probably grass areas, which he could put a sign there, but there's a lot of houses that have that curb with landscaping, and yes, if you took it seven feet off the curb, you might be in the middle of that landscaping and you wouldn't see anything, but as a choice...
That's your landscaping, right, we give you the option, if you, I mean, you know, I hate to say, you can put the sign in or you can keep the landscaping in, you might not be able to do both depending on your setup, but we, you know, I mean, the reason why it's seven feet is for safety, that's why it's seven feet, it's so that you look down and walk and you can see if the neighbor's car is pulling out of the driveway, because I'll tell you, you know, we're coming up to a political season, you've got a lot of signs on the street and you cannot see down the street so easily as you can like right now where there's nothing out there. So, that was the whole idea behind the seven, seven and a half feet, eight feet, wherever it is, it's really strictly a safety thing, but, you know, your results may vary depending on how your walk is, so, we'll figure something out. Any other citizens? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Manzo and the city council members. My name is Nicholas Michael Zabel, I reside at 3320 High Whiskers Drive West. I am a student of the Public Policy and Administration Program under the direction of Justice Jeff Cronchell at Petersburg College. I come before you tonight to speak on Agenda Item Number 10 about the city ordinance regarding Chapter 86 Signs. This would be the ordinance, this would be the consideration of Ordinance 21-02, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballard Beach, Florida Providing for the Amendment of Chapter 86 Signs of the City Code of Ordinances Providing for incorporation of recitals.
Mr. Zabel, may I interrupt you if you will, you have three minutes, and I want you to make the most of it, we know the ordinance, it's in front of us, we've, believe me, we know this one, go right into what you want to tell us, okay?
All right, we'll do it. In its current state, this ordinance, under the general provisions, oh, watch him, sorry, okay, in its current state, this ordinance regulates how signs within city limits may be displayed, depending on the type of signage, it states when and where the sign may be placed, depending upon, depending upon the type of property. It also determines the size of the posted signage. Under the general provisions of Section 86-61, Item Number Five, it states that any sign including its base, which is broken or damaged or which becomes unsightly, shall be repaired by the property owner or agent of the owner who is responsible for the sign. What is there in this ordinance that determines the meaning of the word unsightly? Is it a matter which, is that a matter which is left between the property owner and the code enforcement? In some ways, can this be used by members of the city to restrict freedom of speech because they dislike a sign leaving to be unsightly? While I can understand the importance of keeping the city looking nice as it attracts more people who move here, my main concern is the protection of a citizen's freedom of speech. I believe that this is something the city council should invest in, as it could be interpreted differently than it was intended, which could cause future lawsuits in the future. That's all I have to say on that.
Excellent, thank you, very well said, and now you've given us something else to look at here, so, and you actually had a little bit of extra time too, so, okay?
Yeah, I definitely, I planned a lot, I had plenty of time.
Yeah, I definitely, I planned a lot of having a problem.
We knew what you were talking, if you don't mind staying up there, I'm gonna, you know, again, we've done a lot of debate on this, and this is... Gentlemen, Mr. Zabel, you've come forward and highlighted something that even in all the readings we've done, you know, this is how... When I say it, people say, "You're being a lawyer." Well, so is he. And then, you know what? I'd rather he do this here than somebody doing it up in federal court. So, with that said, I'm gonna turn it over, because this is what we have our city attorney for, Mr. Riley. Do we want to make any comments on this? And, you know, he raises an issue here that may require some discussion. I'm gonna look at your, you know, look for your legal guidance on this one.
The comment he's made is related to Section eighty-six dash sixty-one subsection five, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And his comment was that regarding really the word "unsightly," it's not defined.
Well, there's, and this is repetitive because I've already said it, but we've spent more than a year going over this. There have been a lot of things where, that have been defined, been further defined. That was one of the things that we felt, or the council felt and directed me to address was places where there was, it would be helpful to have a better definition than the one that we had. And we've gone through and added actually quite a few different definitions. The word "unsightly" is, there's a lot of things, just so you understand how this was put together, there were certain things that, in the drafting process, that were changed. And I know this will be good for a laugh, but I tried to change as little as I possibly could. The thing that was the major change to the ordinance was oriented towards establishing the basis for the city to say, "We want an ordinance that supports an attractive community, and we have standards that will make this an attractive community." And I always would use the same example. Bel Air Beach is a residential community, and Bel Air Beach is not U.S. nineteen on almost any section that you choose. It's simply, those are two different worlds. So, a lot of the stuff that was added was going to show, or to give a basis for why these things are justified based on what the community needs are and what the community standards are, and the City Council has debated a lot of those. My legal answer to the question about the word "unsightly" is if a word is not typically defined in a statute or an ordinance, then it's given the normal and customary usage of the word. So, you know, "unsightly" to most people would mean, you know, something that's dilapidated or in disrepair or that type of thing. Ultimately, if there's a, any action taken, it would be typically through code enforcement. And if somebody had a code enforcement case, which was not made before the City Council, the special magistrate for the code enforcement hearing would make a determination whether that was unconstitutionally vague or not, if the case hinged on that one word. I personally am not uncomfortable with the words which are broken or damaged or which becomes unsightly. Those to me are pretty good legal standards, and most people would have some understanding of what those meant. So, my answer is, I don't think it needs to be revised forward.
I don't think I made a comment.
Sure.
I think the key word you need to look at is which, or two words, is "which becomes." So, at the time it was installed, it was not "unsightly." It became that way later. So, that would indicate to me that we're looking at wear and tear.
And my question, you know, at what point is it determined that it becomes unsightly? Like, oh, there's, you know, it's scratched up a tiny bit, but it's still, you know, overall intact. But not, you know, it's not, it's the, you know, it's the vagueness of that word, you know? Anything I do can be considered unsightly if it's marked, you know, marred, weathered, or whatever. So, I'm just wondering, at what point is it considered unsightly?
Mr. Zabel, I'm gonna actually agree with Attorney Riley and Vice Mayor Gaddis. I'm not an attorney, I don't know if you know that, but I love making these things apart. That's like a hobby of mine. But I don't have a problem with this one, and I'll tell you why. And it's a good observation, and listen, if you're not an attorney, you should think of becoming one, because this is something someone can challenge. You don't have to be able to challenge it because you don't like the message on it, because that doesn't make it unsightly. And there's a famous Supreme Court opinion about pornography, and they said, "Well, what does that mean?" And the judge said, "We know it when we see it, okay?" There's a sign I know, supposedly it's pictured around not too long ago. This thing was out there three years ago when I was campaigning for mayor. It was, it's rusty. It's fallen apart. It's on an ankle. I don't know why it hasn't been pulled and stuffed in City Hall's dumpster, okay? It's on a vacant lot. It's unsightly, okay? But then there's new ones. I mean, not a scratch. I mean, I think that would be unreasonable. There's a division of reasonableness, I think. If you were here earlier, you heard me talking about being reasonable, you know, so. Any sign could have a little bit of weathering, but to the point, you know, where the lettering is worn off of it, or it's rusty, or the chain is no longer holding the sign, I mean, then we start to get there. What's that point? I mean, there's a lot of things, where how much is too much? You know, I just wrote a, just finished an appeal on how much was too much in a legal standard in terms of a video that was shown to the jury, how much was too much? And it's a balancing act. That's basically what the court would say. It's a balancing act. So, excellent observation. I'm okay with it, the way it is right now, but if anybody ever gets nailed on this. And the other thing I'll tell you, too, is our code enforcement, Danny Doherty's left here, but our focus on code enforcement, we just had a meeting on this, is supposed to be about gaining compliance and education. So, we're not supposed to be the Gestapo, and we come in and go, "You don't like your sign," and it's getting pulled out, thrown in the truck, and you can get it from Lynn Reeves, and he's gonna charge you ten bucks for it. That's not what we're about. You know, somebody should come, if they think the sign's getting a little rusty or whatever, they should have that discussion with you. Like, hey, maybe throw a little paint on it or something like that. That's what it's supposed to work. The reason why we're actually doing this is because it didn't work that way. We had a couple signs that were confiscated in towns, and people came right in there, and they were, they didn't threaten to sue us, but they told us that they could have, and they, we all know they had a point. So, that's where we're coming from. I don't know if it satisfies you. I think you still have, you have a good finding here, but I think it's clear enough, or at least for me as an attorney. Mr. Banker?
I think you raised a good point. I put a Frank Banker sign out in council. You don't like it, you throw an egg at it. Is it unsightly?
That's the point of getting that. But, you know, it's like, oh, I don't like it, and if it's, you know, getting towards that, you know, definition that you have of unsightly, and someone forces it as unsightly because they don't like it, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
They're gonna have a hard time if they don't like it, but you know, if a sign becomes unsightly, somebody paints it over, whatever. Yeah, you might, or Frank's gonna have to dig into his campaign treasury and replace that one. But one of the other things that we have here is, I mean, and this, I'm gonna say this to the city manager now, because it should be highlighted in the code. We are gonna be coming up on election soon. You can sit there with Mr. Hansik and his tape measure and get this thing down perfect, and make sure you have it exactly right, and some landscaper's cutting the lawn, and he moves your sign. He doesn't know our ordinance, and it's supposed to be seven point three-five feet. He doesn't know that, okay? So, code should be about compliance, move the darn sign, move around the lawn, move a million of them, because people get the lawn cut every week, and a lot of signs moved. We put them in the right spot. A candidate will, but other people move them. And, you know, again, this is supposed to be about just getting, just moving where they want. Now, if somebody puts them all wrong, you might want to have a little call with that person and say, "Read the rule," but, you know, just want to highlight that, because it's not, you know, if somebody can move them, they move them by accident. They don't know the rule. But again, your sign shouldn't be confiscated. If we do that, that's too heavy-handed. I will never support that kind of code enforcement, sir. Never. I don't think anybody on this council did. I know we helped you, but you raised a good point.
Thank you for your time to help me to understand that a bit better.
Excellent observation. Thank you. Any other citizens? Yes, sir?
I'm Roger Moll, opening by colleague of Florida, and reading over, I believe, first of all, thank you for all this work you've done. That was a trying drive, but the only thing I saw excluded is, I think it was trying to deal with on page seven, number nine, the bright flashing lights that says "lesson." You just may want to consider whether putting an amendment later, or just putting it down. But like I mentioned, the first section says that photophobia and photo white lights being flashed then cause neurological disorders, causing either, in some cases for people with migraines, for other people with bipolar disorder and for epilepsy. And they even made cities take off their photo radars because it had stimulated attacks for people who had caused accidents. And so, I would hate for us to be stimulating any of those neurological disorders because we don't have something there that keeps us from having the flashing signs of bright lights.
You're saying add it to this list of...
Right now, all that I see that it says is, say, "lesson," that's very vague. But photosensitivity is a different neurological disorder, or a problem, a problem development like that, excuse me. But my only concern is we don't want to cause an issue when we can avoid it right now. Thank you.
We do have something on page eight, thank you, that says, "To regulate signs so as not to interfere or obstruct the vision of, or distract motorists, bicycles, or pedestrians." So, could argue that it's under there, maybe not as clear as you said it, though, you know.
Well, most people want to realize that there's photophobia that causes the trouble. So, I would hate to see something get an echo back in the street. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other citizens comments? Yes, sir?
Ending all one one five possible, stay out of the scene. Are these going to apply to our sign out here out front? These regulations?
Apply every sign in the city, depending on the zone.
Okay, so my concerns are that if you read this, there's quite a number. And as Mr. Riley said, we're not, we're a residential community, we're not U.S. nineteen. So, I'm looking at page seven, I mean, seven, eight. You look at these, and it's number five, "Maintain and enhance the scenic beauty of the aesthetic environment and the city's ability to attract sources of economic development and growth." That concerns me. Are we gonna be putting advertising on or something out there? And then number seven, "Minimize the possible adverse effect of signs on nearby public and private property." You have a number of houses here that border the pond and behind the pond. And so, I think we need to take a good look at how long that sign's gonna be on at night, if we're gonna allow it to flash messages, because that definitely will impact property values. It will impact people's ability to sleep because you're gonna have a sign flashing in your, we're gonna have it flashing in our family room window all day long. And I don't believe that that will improve my property values. I don't believe that the people who live behind the pond, in fact, I know they won't because I've talked to them, their front windows face that. And that, even the streetlights reflect on the pond, all the way across the pond. I would encourage you all to come over and look at that, because the streetlights reflect across that pond. Right. So, and if you look at page eight, "Preferably signs from conflicting with the principal permitted use of the lots and adjoining lots." Well, my permitted use is for residential. So, I would believe that that would conflict with that. I just, I think that we really need to think about this and put some things in here, because we're gonna have digital signs on Gulf Boulevard in front of the motel, in front of Beach Club, and certainly the condos will. Once they go up in front of the motel and the beach club, condos will put them up there because we allow short-term rentals and with the advertising there. So, I would like to strongly suggest that you look at having or regulating digital signs.
I'd refer to the city attorney, if you wish to comment on any of this. I mean, again, citizens are raising issues here. I know we've, we were hoping to move this to a vote tonight, but we want ordinance that's in good shape here. This is legislative intent that she was looking for, so. Overall, the legislative intent is kind of the idea behind the governing principles. That's what we're trying to shoot for, okay? It doesn't mean you're gonna hit everyone perfectly, but Mr. Riley, I have you address this because you're our city attorney.
I'll address it by saying that this list of things is what, or as he said, it is specific legislative intent to explain the basis for the regulation that follows. So, this is the predicate for other things and saying what is important within this community. A lot of the, or several of the things that you highlighted, could it be handled slightly differently? Of course it could. I will say what has been said already several times, that City Council and I and City Manager have spent a year on this, and there have been a lot of things that were brought up in work sessions and elsewhere that were debated. And this current ordinance that you have in front of you was what the result is. And if there's further things that the council feels strongly enough to revisit and before you approve it, then the thing to do is not go forward. Personally, I think that's a mistake for a couple reasons. You'll, once it's passed, there's always an opportunity to amend it at a later date if necessary. Part of the reason to try and get this done now is because there is an election that will be coming up, and pretty soon it will be election season. And part of the object of doing this was to address how the political signs would be handled. And if the City Council goes another month or two without passing the ordinance, then you're back in the quandary of how do you handle signs during the political season? So, I'm not diminishing in any way, shape, or form, the comments you're making, but I'm saying this, if you read through that very lengthy list of things, all those are oriented towards going to court at a later date and saying, "Judge, we made every reasonable effort we possibly could to state what was important for our community and why we created these standards that we did in order to make sure that the aesthetic value of our community is intact." That's what it's for. And again, you can, you could artfully say it a different way, but you can always do that. And again, I would encourage the City Council to, to... You're running out of time, in my opinion, with respect to this, because you really need something in place with respect to the political season. And I'm the first one, I want the legal standard to be as absolutely clear as it possibly can be. And there's, you know, I mean, to be quite honest with you, there's always a way to make it clarify things, but this is a year's worth of effort to get to this point. So, that's my response.
Mr. Moll, I want to just add two things that I'll go back and try out here, and I have nothing to care, okay? Two things. I agree with Fred Riley regarding this political season coming up. None of the council members did this, but we had a gentleman in this town, ran banners that filled his roof. You could see him from the waterways, okay? For a presidential candidate, and one wasn't enough, but the guy put up three of them, okay? I think. I never saw all three, but I was told he had three of them. That's an eyesore. And you know what? It happened to be my guy that he was advertising for. It doesn't matter with my guy or the next guy. It just, that's not what the city was looking for. We don't want to stop the First Amendment right to stick a sign out saying, "Vote for President Smith," but we want to say, you know, you're not gonna put a banner the size of a roof. I mean, that kills everyone's value. Let me say this about this sign outside here, okay? As you look at this council, you're gonna just start from Robin Aki, Robin Aki, Frank Banker, myself, who know on that sign. People over here, go ahead and go, yes, that's right now unimportant. The sign passed through a democratic process. And we had a lot of debate, and it was a good debate, really was, okay? Four to three had passed. But we were told, okay, and even being in the minority that we lost, that that sign's not gonna flash, and that sign's not gonna be on all night, and it's not gonna be an eyesore. And I'm telling you, if it becomes an eyesore, and that starts happening, okay? You know how to reach me, okay? I'll bring that motion. I have the right to bring that motion. I will not let that happen in this city. I will not let that happen in this city, okay? And hopefully we'll get four votes and we'll stop that, okay? That is not what that sign is supposed to be. This is not a car wash, it's not a strip club. We're not going to have that in this city, okay? It's supposed to blink on and off. And I don't know who is driving Gulf Boulevard and Causeway Boulevard at two in the morning that needs to know what our next council meeting is, okay? They can wait till the next day. As far as I'm concerned, that sign should go off at a reasonable hour, nine or 10 o'clock. That's my opinion.
I would say eight or nine.
Eight maybe, fine, that's fine.
Most of the people in this town are retired.
I agree.
Traffic is minimal there. But so I guess my sarcastic comment is, I could put a blue sign in my front yard that followed these that was digital. Because there's one across the street from me.
I'm, I'm, I'll make it such that, I'm the legal opinion, you will come from the town attorney, not from me.
I think you know what, you institute because...
Is that what I believe, is that opening the bottle? Yes, Patty? Glenn Gunn? Leslie Natero was asked the name Glenn Gunn, okay?
I want to point out, page seventeen, section eighty-six point five exemptions. This chapter shall not apply to subsection C, signs for the benefit of the citizens is authorized by the City Manager, City Council, or other government authority having jurisdiction in the state. So effectively, this chapter does not apply to the street with the sign out in front of the community center. See there?
I see it.
Last paragraph on page seventeen.
Well, there's another constitutional issue if you want to argue it. We may never get this done. I mean, you know, we're in a residential, this is what we're talking about, okay? Ms. Moore, you're one hundred percent correct. You're in the same neighborhood, you face each other. Why can't, you have a digital sign, why can't it be the same size? Why are we exempting ourselves? I mean, okay.
Are we becoming a city of, do we stay that?
Pretty much, yes, that's what we're becoming. So, and we can't, there's your constitutional challenge. Because it's one thing for me to say, or you to say, Frank, on your street, I want a digital sign. We could say, well, wait a minute, you know, nobody else has one here. She's directly opposite us. She's in the same situation, other than, she's not a government entity, but we're exempting ourselves. Now, government entities sometimes exempt themselves, so, you know, this is the problem with sign ordinances. We could do this forever. I don't know, look this day anymore, I really don't. I mean, you have a lot of hair. Glenn Gunn, and then back to council up here. Glenn Gunn?
Yes, thank you. I agree with Frank Banker to begin with. I think this whole thing pendulum has swung too far in the opposite direction. And this whole old sign thing has, its origin has changed, it's taken on a life of its own. I think it's absurdly long and it's overly scripted, we're not trying to accomplish here. As I've brought it up at the work session here, I think the biggest issue we're going to run into is electronic signs and how they relate to commercial businesses. And I think we've missed the mark on this and this ordinance is incomplete and it's not ready to go to print. Yes, take a year to get where we are, but I think you're going to try and push this through and then kick the most meat portion of the thing down the road and it's going to be another year or two before those questions are answered. And surprisingly, the biggest sign issue that's garnered the residential pushback is the electronic sign, and yet that's not included in the sign ordinance. To address some of the concerns of Deputy Roger Law, ever since we started talking about this electronic sign, we've been trying to state that we look at the best practices for the implementation of electronic signs or whatever, we missed topics and done, but everybody seems to keep latching on to this commercial version and as Mayor Montzow puts it, the car wash or the movie theater or whatever, and that's not the case. Several times, we've talked about the standards we want to use to implement this sign, and every once is anybody come in to kind of review those things to relay their fears. I think it's incumbent upon this city to set the bar for how you implement electronic signs. And we need to take the high road on this and set the example for the commercial businesses and absolutely avoid the flashing signs and strong reduced epileptic fits. And as a helicopter pilot, I can speak to that all day long. But we need to be the exemplary person on the high road of this thing, and we are not there, we are not ready for this. So I'm totally opposed to this thing right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Council members?
I will, I'd like to address Mr. Gunn's comments. Originally, or the last time we, last conversation we had about this was that this was geared primarily towards changes for residences. And we would have to come back and append this at a later date. And I thought that the council committed to continue working on this immediately. So whether we pass this now or we hold off until we finish the commercial version, I don't have a problem with what we have in front of us. I agree, though, that it is incomplete.
And I believe the recollection is correct, as I recall the statement. Mr. Gunn, do bring this up. Frank, I got the next about the digital sign and that we needed to put work in on that. And here's my problem, okay? Right now, we have really no residential sign or, we have an ordinance, but we're not going to, we're not enforcing it, which is a free for all. And luckily, the citizens have been most understanding, respectful, and good. I mean, even without an ordinance, I don't see any eyesores around the city. So people are self-regulating and they're doing a good job, okay? I applaud the citizens for that. I remember before I ever sought office, sitting in that ordinance, audience, and listening to our then, not Fred Riley, our then-city attorney, talk about passing an incomplete ordinance. And I almost fell off my chair, calling, you can't do that, and they did it anyway. I don't think they ever fixed it. And I'm hearing stuff tonight, and I'm seeing stuff that, you know, even though you've read through this a million times, you see it and the stuff keeps getting pointed out. It is, it's very big, it's a very big ordinance. It's not ready right now. But here's our problem. We can table it or we can vote it down. We got to keep working on it. And we are going to run out of time because, and then all the political candidates hopefully will regulate themselves or we'll get people putting up banners that are the size of a roof. I'm not sure what we're going to do with. So before, I mean, we've debated this, I'm going to, if there's no other comments, actually, Dave, you have the last word. Is that the last word? Does anybody else want to speak after Dave?
I have no other comments.
Okay, Frank, do you want to say something? Or then we'll give Dave another opportunity if anybody, here's what we're going to do. Frank wants to say something, rest of the council, and Dave ultimately will get to you last if you want to say anything more.
Just like Mr. Gunn says, I don't think it's ready to pass the muster yet. The citizens have brought some great comments. I remember there was a bill passed years ago, the Speaker of the House back then said, you got to pass the bill to see how good it is. I remember that. And I'm still waiting to see how good it is. I just think it should be tabled.
Are you making a motion to table?
We're making a motion to table.
We have a second on motion to table. No second, that motion fails. Any other council comments?
I would, Dave, here, from what I was understanding, same thing he said, that we were kind of passing this from a residential and then the commercial aspect would come later. But I do agree there's slippery slope because we very easily, if we wanted to, could take advantage with this digital sign outside and use it as Times Square if we decided to, nothing in this would stop us. So that's going to be a checks and balance on us. But I think that what we have so far is good, but we definitely do further work from the commercial and the digital sign upfront.
I'm going to agree with, you know, I wanted to move this thing forward if we could because the reasons that Fred Riley gave, I think those are all valid reasons and can benefit this community. And at the risk, and I hope this doesn't happen, that somebody goes hot wild, I don't think this is ready for prime time still. There's a couple of things that have just been pointed out tonight that weren't totally apparent. You can blame us, I mean, it is a long ordinance, I've read through it a number of times, but you just miss stuff. And there's a lot. So this thing may not pass tonight, which will get us back to the drawing board. And if it doesn't pass tonight, I'm asking that we stick it right back on the work session. We're going to keep working on this until it kills us, but we're going to try. We still have a chance. We have December and January. It can become law in January, so we still cover the season if we can get through this council, if we can get through the next work session with it. But there's a lot here still.
One more thing. Fred, what do you recommend based on all these comments? Sorry to put you on the spot, but I'd like some cheaper guidance.
Vice Mayor Gaddis summed up, and what I thought y'all had decided at the last workshop, was the digital sign component would be something we would work on immediately. If, I don't necessarily agree with the various comments, but I again say, in drafting this, there's a lot of things I didn't change at all because that wasn't the tone of the discussion that the City Council had. So the things that were made, you know, seize on, for example, versus what John Hanzek said, there's no grand design on anybody's part to violate constitutional rights with the sign placement. It, I know conclusively, those were standards that existed prior to this, which is why they weren't changed. Nobody raised an issue about changing them. And the City Council, in addressing this in as many sessions as it's been addressed, did so in a good faith manner to try and work through all the different debate topics that there were. If y'all are not ready to pass it, then don't pass it and we'll go back to the drawing board. But I will say, the digital sign thing will introduce a whole new element into the discussion. And I, my feeling is, you will not be able to pass a sign ordinance that includes the digital element if you're trying to get this done before the election season begins. With one caveat, unless you have special meetings, and you can do it that way if you so choose. But that's your, you know, I would suggest, if you're not ready, if people are not ready to go forward with it, then I will, I've highlighted the various things that were discussed tonight. I will do red line changes to those things, and y'all can address it at a workshop in the very near future. And hopefully, these types of issues can be addressed. But I don't like passing something that somebody has, you know, endless questions about, but I will tell you, it's, this is a very, I've said this all along, this stuff is a quagmire because of the various ways that the courts have handled it. And, you know, you can go through and look for things to cite as a basis for a challenge, and you can do that with any law. That's even more accessible with something like this. So that's, that's my thoughts on it.
So if we pass this and the plan is to go back and do the digital aspect, would that be an amendment to it?
You would add another, a whole section that addressed digital signs. This is chapter eighty-six. You would add certainly several provisions that are specific to digital signs.
And we'd go through the two, you know, pass first time, publication, pass second time, and then it becomes ordinance change.
Well, I'm wondering if just for feasibility and to make it more simple, try to pass this one before the political with a big old promise and put it on the work session right now to start the digital aspect and get that passed as soon as possible. Because I have a feeling that what's going to happen is, we're going to go back to the work section, we're going to work out all these, it's going to come up with a first reading, someone's going to find something else, and then we're going to work on those, and we're never going to get this done. So should we just focus on this and pass this and then put a separate provision for digital signs, only work on that and get that done?
You know, the digital sign is the hundred, five hundred pound gorilla now, you know, that thing has caused the problem. This is not ready to go. And here's my problem, I hear exactly what the mall says, and I, and I respect everything they say, and the people that aren't even here, that live across the pond on another block, that are going to have to look at Las Vegas, you know, south here. I would vote for this, but I want to hear the city manager, who's going to control this sign, speak into that mic and tell me that this thing's not going to blink, this thing's, I mean, you got to regulate the temperature, and I get it, it's the first night, you might not have it perfect and everything, but when that thing goes on, if that's lighting, I'm going to go by their house, and if it's lighting up their, you know, front room, then it's no good, we're going to turn it off. I mean, and if I have to call special counsel, maybe we'll do that. I mean, I want an assurance, I want these folks to walk out that, you know, we're not going to be flashing it, we're not going to be blinking, and it's not going to be open all night, it's not the diner, you know, what can we do to assure them? Because I'll vote for it, it goes against everything I believe in to vote for incomplete legislation, but we got to get this residential aspect done before somebody puts up another banner on their house. So, City Manager, are you ready to commit to that? Or can you commit to that, you know, that this, that we can allay their fears at least until we get around to this? Because I agree, Fred Riley, this isn't going to be a one-session topic to go through digital, it's a lot.
Well, there, we're going to control the timing of it, and that's, that's why it hasn't come on yet, we're getting some sensors for it. When you say flashing, it's not going to do this, it is going to have, you know, scrolling, which you change anyway, that's normal. And we're not anticipating it's going to stay on all night. And...
So you're not anticipating, or you're...
No, we're not.
You're not, okay. When will you turn it off?
Well, we were figuring somewhere around ten or eleven o'clock, because that's our, when our...
How about nine?
You know, but in any case, we'll resolve that issue. The other thing, the light throw that everybody keeps talking about, we did a light meter study and did all that, and the streetlight over there puts more light on the mall's home than this sign's going to put on their own. Or anybody across the pond. And we'll continue to do those studies once the light is fully operational. But at this point in time, we've got a couple of things we've got to add to it to be able to control it. It's not going to have advertising on it. Well, I guess you could say it is going to have advertising, but it's not advertised if there's a City Council meeting, or there's a Christmas tree lighting or something like that, but it's not, it's not meant to be commercial. It's mainly to put out, give the residents city information. And that's what it's for. And that was always the intent.
Patty Gentry, for Glenn Gunn. Glenn Gunn?
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, Mayor, you're reacting in the same vein. I'm sure you hadn't been through the list of best practices for the implementation of the sign. We've addressed this at a meeting before, and Kyle and the City Manager have it, and that's what's going to be used to guide us in the implementation and the programming of the sign. And I would recommend that all the council members get a look of a copy of that and take a look at it, because I think it'll answer a lot of the questions and allay a lot of the fears that we seem to have on this thing. Because a lot of these things have been addressed by other municipalities and bad actors out there who did it wrong. And like I say, I think it's incumbent upon us to take the high road in this and do it right. If we want to do the sign ordinance, let's touch it one time and do it right the first time and not keep parsing this thing out and kicking the can down the road. If we want to do it, let's make it one smooth continuum. Thanks, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try and bring this to a conclusion. We're coming up at eight thirty here. Any other council comments? I don't give Dave the last word, if no one else. No one else, Dave?
I have no other comments.
Okay, I'm going to call the question then. So up for consideration, first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballard Beach, Florida, providing for the amendment of chapter eighty-six signs of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for the amendment of chapter eighty-six signs of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with, and providing for an effective data. Yes, vote gets this through and moves it on to the second reading. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Banker?
Go.
Councilmember Gunn?
Dave.
Councilmember Otero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Mandel?
Aye. So first reading, it's going to pass 5 to 2. Madam Clark, you'll advertise this, please, and bring it back to us on the next work session, please. I've heard it, and Glenn Gunn is correct. We need to have a discussion on digital. Let's get the ball rolling, even though we may not finish it that night, but let's get the ball rolling on digital.
I believe that's all commercial.
All commercial?
Yes.
Well, it's going to be all digital, too. I mean, it's... I don't even remember anymore whether digital's covered. I've had homeowners stick digital in their house, and I don't know, you know, so let's find out. And if there's any other revisions, I mean, something's come up here tonight that I'm not that thrilled with about exemption. So let's see where this goes. Right, that concludes number 10. It's 8:30. Does anyone need a break?
Yes. And I also want to go ahead and announce that I won't be coming back after break. I cannot come back after break this evening.
Okay. So let the record reflect Rita Swope will be leaving at 8:31. Council of the... Hang on, before you leave, Rita, is everyone in favor of taking about a 10-minute break? Aye, everyone? Aye, there's no... 8:31, come back at 8:40. Let's say 8:45, okay? We'll actually take a couple extra minutes. And note the record, 8:31, Rita Swope has left me. Come back for 8:40.
Why pay the taxes? You have to pay here with your bill.
Why pay the taxes? You have to pay here with your bill.
Why pay the taxes? You have to pay here with your bill.
Why pay the taxes? You have to pay here with your bill.
I did say, I mean...
There is a way to measure it. The cans, and they can't prepare the traffic like to the gathering.
Right, because I keep telling you now, one projects down, one projects up.
From the road, and it causes traffic. We can't have them in a row on the commercial property. Your side, your...
I would love it.
It's very specific about how they deal with money. And just so you know, that port is 15 years old.
See, that's what I can say. We need to have this in there. They made that. When they put that sign, they didn't think about it.
To give yourself a...
Yes.
Text you right now, and then you can have it.
Well, our mayor is pretty outspoken. He's going to run again. We begged him to run again. I mean, I know he wasn't. That's what he was thinking. And he changed his mind.
My cell phone number is 727-9072. And it's Denver Ball, and then you're on my email as I mentioned.
That would be crazy.
Everybody wants to learn this week.
I know I keep this in mind, too.
I just got it, John.
Yes, okay.
This is Dr. Aki. I just think the council would just kind of give her the 10-second version of what goes...
Oh, really?
He has... He asked a lot. He said...
I don't know. I have to go to Ballard Beach, Florida. This is my worst enemy. I came to that. I'm a member of the city. Simply for the political... So we don't want to be there for a month. It's okay to have it for a purpose, too, in front of a person like yourself, or this whole block. I bought the box here, modern day, modern day. Simply because I thought it would be a nice community for milk and merchandise. And the other thing, this was supposed to be for dinner, and hope that way. And from our position, the only one...
Oh, great. Well, I don't want to...
I don't want to cost you that much.
I'm not going to say the wall's...
I know I keep this in mind, too.
I just got it, John.
Yes, okay.
This is Dr. Aki. I just think the council would just kind of give her the 10-second version of what goes...
Oh, really?
He has... He asked a lot. He said...
I don't know. I have to go to Ballard Beach, Florida. This is my worst enemy. I came to that. I'm a member of the city. Simply for the political... So we don't want to be there for a month. It's okay to have it for a purpose, too, in front of a person like yourself, or this whole block. I bought the box here, modern day, modern day. Simply because I thought it would be a nice community for milk and merchandise. And the other thing, this was supposed to be for dinner, and hope that way. And from our position, the only one...
Oh, great. Well, I don't want to...
I don't want to cost you that much.
They're not going to say the wall's... And I'm not going to allow them to build this for fall, or for the summer. So that's a great point.
Dr. Aki, I'm sure you represent...
Dr. Aki, I'm sure you represent...
I'm a representative.
I have...
Yeah, I'm sure you represent...
Dr. Aki, I'm sure you represent...
Dr. Aki, I'm sure you represent...
I'm a representative.
I'm a representative.
I'm a representative.
Dr. Aki, I'm sure you represent...
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 That's why I'm always saying, I would say you push this forward, and we're going
to work a lot of...
Well, my wife, she said, "Ask me."
Yeah, she can know and I'll be there. I'm telling her.
Well, that's why I'm saying, carry me up this town. That's why I should push it.
No, I would be pushing that forward.
Yes.
You can. You can. Absolutely.
Yeah, but he was married.
He was married a long time ago.
Let's get some more rain.
What's he going to say? Well, I represent...
That's why I...
No, but you're right. Somebody could...
Only your uncle's son would say, "Aki."
I will.
No, I hate you.
He's trying to get a little more...
He's very good.
He's very good.
Regardless as a doctor, I'm a hope. That's why I did...
I'm talking to your audience. No, seriously. I believe you. I believe you.
Because I got my own child, just in our... Well, I got two million dollars. So I cannot be out in this town. I want to sit out here and relax. I can't sit in here.
Well, I'm taking a shower.
Yeah, no, thank you guys so much.
I'm sitting on the beach, and I'm going to sit on the beach.
Tell Dr. Aki about the way the light...
The way the light...
Hold on. I'm going to listen. Watch.
Aki.
For example, if the wall is...
That sign is allowed to be once per year. That's it. If your president will pop, and Jason will drop, and you have that sign, it's once per year. But once per year, it's a dark, powerful darkness at night, a lot where you can just barely see where your sign is. If it's more than that, your sign is allowed to be in the city of town. I'll send you the mall.
You also said, well, that's what I said. I would... I think I can hear you from one, but when you called this about... That's not true, because...
I mean, they make it, we said not to monetize, so I was going to do it.
Those are the great ones.
That's why I did that.
That's true.
I heard you say the sign.
Well, we aren't Tampa.
I heard you say the sign.
And just go to Google, just say "sign." It'll tell you to...
Yes, so you know the future. You're always welcome. You don't have to be... You have to be...
It doesn't matter.
I don't think there's non-comparative...
Yeah.
John, I believe correctly in my heart, but I believe you think as a rental, you're allowed to...
Yeah, anybody. You're lucky. You're never going to say no.
And you're also welcome to come to the work session, too. The work session where they discuss all this, and then it's more informal.
I just want to rehire. How about that?
I know. I'm pleased to be here at the hospice.
I'll have our purpose. I'll have our engines. It's all good.
It's all just...
Nice to meet you. I appreciate you coming.
Yes, I appreciate you coming. It's very nice to meet you.
But that's...
But those are the kinds of information you need with the individual. Because how do you say, "How important is this?"
It's a...
Ask my daughter. I'm the grandmother. Please. But yes, so...
Ask my daughter. I'm the grandmother. Please.
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 And you're also welcome to come to the work session, too. The work session where they discuss all this, and then it's more informal.
I just want to rehire. How about that?
I know. I'm pleased to be here. And they need her at the hospice.
I'll have our purpose. I'll have our engines. It's all good.
It's all just...
No, it is. It's just... Nice to meet you. I appreciate you coming.
Yes, I appreciate you coming. It's very nice to meet you.
But that's...
But those are the kinds of information you need with the individual. Because how do you say, "How important is this?" Things like...
Yeah.
Ask my daughter. I'm the grandmother. Please.
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 See, yell back and give a public...
Yeah.
You feel like you're hot. That's why I'm like, even after all this, I'm always like this. And I think you're really tight. It's like, I speak out. Because I'm shy. I'm actually very shy. So when I have this, I feel like...
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, so... And I'm sort of swear all day that I can't make it without it. Like, I'm always like, even at home, I'm like, I believe in here. I'm okay. Like, something is...
I'm always like, I'm always like...
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 Especially with what I do. I'm like, you're standing there, and you're talking.
Smells, you know.
I'm like, I'm like...
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 She's...
Yeah, I'm going to text her about it. She had a...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I said, "Why do you have...?"
Yeah.
"Are you kind of a lot?"
Yeah.
"Are you a thing?"
Yeah.
"Is she..."
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 I'm sorry.
"Is she..."
I'm sorry.
"Is she..."
I'm sorry.
"Is she..."
I... What's going on? Hey, just give me a thumbs up when we're on it. Ready? Okay. Okay, good evening again, everyone. It's 8:49. We're back on the record. And next item up is item 11, consideration of ordinance 21-10, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, providing for amendments to chapter 30, marine structures, activities, and facilities, section 30-2, section 30-52, section 30-53F and H, section 30-1442, section 30-185, and section 30-191D of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of an amendment to section 30-2, section 30-52, section 30-53F and H, section 30-1442, section 30-185, and section 30-191D of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with, and providing for an effective date. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion. Anyone? Moved by Dave Gaddis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Lamannaki. Go to Dave Gaddis. Second by La Manaki, go to Dave Gaddis.
I will defer to the city manager on this one.
Lynn Reeves?
Mayor Consul, some things that we banned, just to highlight, the electric bicycles, which now we can restrict on the beach. That's been added. Vice Mayor Gaddis had asked for some additional stuff for the docks and wharfs. We've added that. We also added the timeframe of 180 days, 90 days, and 180 days for various things, such as fail to keep a boat in the marina. And updated your comments from the last work session. So I think this is ready to move forward unless there's some other comments.
You know there will be. Um, I'm gonna direct one to Fred Riley. I know Fred loves this kind of stuff. Because, see Fred, here's the problem. I was watching the World Series last night, I fell asleep, and I woke up at 3 o'clock. And you know what I was thinking about? Does the state preempt any of this stuff with boats? Honest to God, right? So I'm looking, and there is a state ordinance, because apparently it's all over the place, with how much a state, how much a local city can do, not just in Florida, but even around the country. Okay? So here we go with another can of worms to open up. There is a state ordinance that speaks to this, and I can tell you what it is. I actually have it on my phone if you want me to pull it up. But I guess the question is, is, I know you've done the research on this thing. We don't have to open this up like a constitutional discussion, but are you comfortable, not that it's bulletproof, but are you comfortable that you're okay in taking the step that we're gonna take? I'm sure the answer is yes, but I just want to pose that question to you, particularly since I saw this state statute. Well, it's not clear, this state statute.
At 3 o'clock in the morning, you should have been considering, how could Atlanta blow a 4-1 lead in a 4-8? And that's, that should have really been your question, but... This is based on Section 316.206.551, and it has the definition, and I'm comfortable with it, because I'm typically going to be comfortable when the state law gives you a basis to regulate something. And that is what you're doing, is you have the authority from the legislature to implement this if you feel it is an appropriate measure for your community.
And I think the key was, it has to be really little words. That's what they were really looking for. You know, if somebody was just fishing, let's say, for a few days, that's not what they're looking for. These are boats that are considered where you're really, you know, they have some. They're out there. There are people who are living on them, and it's a, you know, as they call it, it's a cheap way to enjoy the nice cities, and it's a lot of fun. I don't have waterfront property, so I have no dog in the fight, but you know, when somebody parks their boat outside your, you know, $2 million house, it's not funny anymore, so that's what this is all about, right?
Yeah. It's within the city's jurisdiction, and that you have a basis to regulate things within your jurisdiction. I think this is sound.
Okay. Any other city council comments?
I gotta... Thank you. Page four. Who's gonna determine whether these boats are wrecked or junk? I mean, if it's wrecked, it's gonna have damage or whatever like that, but who's gonna determine if yours junk?
Well, that would... Lynn and I were talking about that briefly related to something else, but the code officer of the city has to have a code provision to enforce, and then they have to be enforcing the code provision in a good faith manner. So the, if there is something, the rule of thumb that I would expect the code officer is going to apply is if there is something that presents a life safety issue, then there's, it basically becomes exigent circumstances, and some action needs to be taken. If it's something that is, you know, junk or dilapidated or whatever inform it has, that could be a life safety issue, but often would probably be more of an aesthetic issue.
Yeah, and on page six, like disrepair, we're talking about docks, wharf structures, dangerous structures creating a risk of bodily injury. Who's gonna get that required problem? They're saying the city's...
Um, in writing that, I looked at several different municipalities, and this language came from Clearwater, who addressed it, and they have the same issue y'all have, which is they have a lot of waterfront properties. The change I made that came up in the workshop was it initially said, "Any dock, wharf, pile, or etc.," or ETC. We took out "etc." and put in "wharf" structure, so there was a specific thing. I'm partial to "etc.", although that's what the Clearwater ordinance says. How would you enforce this? You, the code officer is typically not going onto somebody's property, but if it's in the, a structure that's on the water, then, you know, it's a dilapidated, dangerous structure, and you can ride in a boat by it and see that's what it is, then I think the code officer has a basis for bringing a case based on what they can clearly see.
Yeah, well, my question is, if it's falling into the water, then it's beyond disrepair. But if it's, looks like it hasn't been painted, it hasn't been stained, but the structure's still sound? Or we don't know the structure's still sound? I mean, is that something that's disrepair, or is that something that needs to be repaired? It might be not eyesu-ing, but it's still private property?
Well, it is, but the language of it says, "Falls into a state of disrepair and become, and it becomes a dangerous structure, creating an unreasonable risk of bodily injury to any person who may walk upon thereon." If you can see, there's boards missing, and there's...
That's a whole different... Boards missing and boards ready to break are two different things. You can't tell if a board's ready to break until you probably step on it.
Well, that's why I'll go back to, the code officer should be in good faith making an assessment of what is, what's problematic, and if it's a significant risk, unreasonable risk of bodily injury, then they have the basis to bring the case. If there's a, you know, minor thing that's wrong, then they really shouldn't be bringing the case. But that's, you know, they, in enforcement, you have to have some degree of discretion, and then when it goes to a hearing, you have to present the basis for why there's a violation, and the magistrate is the one that ultimately decides whether they presented sufficient evidence or not to justify there being a violation.
Okay, and lastly, we're at page seven. Occupancy, and these slips were within 180 days. Am I correct?
Yes.
So is this opening the door by telling me just, I guess about 50% of us live here full-time, 50% don't, so if you don't use your house in 180 days and I don't wanna buy it, like, is this opening the door saying, hey, you gotta, you gotta put it up for sale?
I'm trying for the marine boats, so...
Oh, I understand. I understand. I mean, the reason of this is because I wanna get my boat in. I wanna buy property here. Is this ever going to be a response?
Well, the workshop, the city council actually spent, I would say, a half an hour talking about what the appropriate times would be, and this is what they came up, the council came up with.
I just, this point, I mean, I drove by there the other day just to see how many. I think there was like one slip that was vacant, you know, so everybody pretty much has a boat there. This was the person who was basically parking and saying, you know, and I know you tried to come in on this last one, and it's a shame, because we did talk about all of this, but it's not your fault, because for whatever reason, that phone connection, it was horrendous, you know, it didn't work, but Glenn Gunn's as clear as a bell tonight, so I don't know.
Is Glenn Gunn like on a Zoom call, or is he just on a regular...
FaceTime.
Oh, FaceTime?
Phone.
Yeah. Maybe I should try that.
Yeah, but I mean, we did go around and around on this, and it was, what we were trying to do was not, somebody like, you know, particularly now, I just heard of, I was talking to somebody, I'm gonna keep that person anonymous, that they were saying, take months to get a part for a car, because there's none in the country. Same thing with these boats, I think Dave was saying there was like shortage of parts on some of them. So we don't wanna penalize the guy who really has a repair that's taking too long. What we wanna, what the whole intent behind this was, the guy who buys the boat slip and doesn't even own the boat, says, yeah, I'm gonna get one in six years, and you all got 40 people who really would love to have it, so... That was the whole intent, it was to try. You know, and I think there's a thing where they can, if they're going on a 200-day cruise, they talk to the city manager, and he'd best be reasonable. We expect that, we had this discussion. I mean, if you're fortunate enough to go on a 200-day cruise, we're not gonna penalize you for that, but, you know, if you're just playing games, that's what this intent was, to get those people off that slip.
I just, I just think it's government's far-reaching into things they shouldn't be reaching.
Consul, I'm a breaker, just to clarify something. As an example with the dock, you heard a complaint about a dock tonight. That resident allowed us to go onto his property to look at this dock. It's in disrepair, and we have a code hearing on it already scheduled for this month, because we've kept talking to the, I guess, the fiduciary for the owner, and we weren't getting anywhere with him, so we're gonna take it to the magistrate, because the dock is in bad shape.
He explained that the dock was falling into the water, too.
No, it wasn't, it's not falling in the water.
I think that's what he was saying.
It's, it's got a lot of loose boards, and it appears to be, the crossmembers underneath it appear to be pretty much eaten up. And I personally talked to the fiduciary for the homeowner, and told her, I said, if you're not gonna rebuild the dock, then just remove the dock. And, you know, she gave me the runaround about it, and so we're just gonna take it to the magistrate. It's, that's... And we went, I went out with the vice mayor, what, six months ago, maybe? And we went out on the water, and we picked out people with seawalls or docks that were damaged, and this, that, and the other. And we stopped by and gave them notices, and last month, I think it was, Danny had 16 of the 17 notices for the docks. It was all taken care of. So it's just a matter of education.
I just have, I've been contacted by people with docks. I've gone out to their house, looked at them, and they said, you know, they had courtesy calls by the code enforcement that, but the docks aren't used by anybody but them, so I would not wanna dabble into their personal business.
It's okay until, until it does fall in the water, and then it's everyone's problem. And that's what we're trying to prevent.
Yeah, but what, what point does it fall into the...
Well, let me put it this way, there was just a normal storm, it wasn't a tropical storm, and I had to be home. This was several years ago, and my son, I was carrying him, he's like, mommy, what's that? I look out, and there's literally an entire dock floating behind my house, went under the little tiny 22nd Bridge, floated, and then got jammed under somebody else's dock. Granted, obviously, a boater's not gonna miss that, but it probably did damage to another dock, a boat, so stuff like that. Dave can tell you, they washed up by his house. You see, after a big storm, you see pieces of docks that have fallen off on the boards. They can ruin our docks, they could ruin a boat going by, so it is a hazard. And I mean, I've reported to Lynn some docks that I've seen where the boards are actually in the water, just waiting for... Right, now, if it hasn't been painted or stained, that's not a code violation, okay? Because you could say the same thing about somebody's house that hasn't been painted. But it's about the ones that are obviously in disrepair, not the ones that you have to go up and look at every single nail to see if it's, you know, at the right, you know, depth. I'm talking about the ones that a nice gust of wind is going to start dislodging boards, and then it becomes a problem. So not the nitpick, he lets look at everybody's, and you know, I don't like the color of that one, but I'm talking about safety.
And to make it clear, if, if a code officer goes beyond your front of your house, your side walk, or in this case, beyond that water, anything they find is gonna be inadmissible. So, and if I ever find out that a code officer goes on a property uninvited, we're gonna have special counsel get to deal with that. That is an illegal search, and I will not, I will not tolerate it, and I would hope that no one else on this council will either. So you're not gonna find a loose board, okay? But, you know, when I'm hearing that pieces of dock are stuck underneath yours, that one we should be able to catch. And that one, I think, you know, I was telling the young gentleman, you know, about the Supreme Court case pornography, we know it when we see it, okay? We know what, we'll tell you if there's a dock that's fallen down, but if we start getting to a fine point that, oh, you know, I kinda noticed you got a screw that's too high, and they, hey, knock it off, okay? That's their private property. But when the, when the railings are falling down, and the dock is half in the water, and it's all rotted out, and it's gonna be a hazard in a couple of wind gusts, then we have an issue. I mean, these things should stick, okay?
That's the only thing that we're looking at. We're not, as an example, there's a house right across the bridge on 22nd Street. There, actually, Dave probably saw it, because he lives close by there. Their whole lift fell into the water, and you could see it. And, you know, we had a complaint about it from someone across the water the other way, and, I mean, you can stand by the bridge and see it. So if we get a complaint, we contact the homeowner, or the renter, or whoever's there. In most cases, they'll take you back there and show it to you. It, it's, you know, the only other way we would find out if there isn't a complaint, if a house goes up for sale, we do a code and lead search to see if there's any violations, and the homeowner gives us permission to go on that property. And...
That's an option, that they don't have, I mean, the lead search, they usually mandated the inspection as a courtesy. We'll do it for you if you want, it's not required.
Right, but the seawall it fell in, if we wouldn't have done that and notified the owner that that seawall was gonna fall, who knows what would have happened? But, you know, we notified the owner that they needed to repair that, and they had a contractor lined up to do it, but then we had three or four days of rain, and the whole thing went in the water. But...
So we were right.
And we have access, okay?
And I mean, on that, that's what we're looking for. You know, I guess the point of this is, don't overreach. In fact, we said that while we were doing this, that, I remember that comment coming up specifically. This is, this is a good ordinance, as long as we're not overreaching. If we get, it's like every other ordinance, we start getting silly on it, which I don't think we will, you know, we should be fine. I mean, the one that's falling in the water, we want dealt with before it falls in the water. It becomes a hazard, it's an navigation. Okay, any other council comments? You good with Glenn there, Patty? You're not good with Glenn? No questions, okay? Citizens?
June Vance, 7th Street. I just wanna remind the council, and I know that you guys were talking about it in that area generally. I had sent the city manager, I got a complaint from a citizen who were in that area, where the council, the majority of his council lives, where a bunch of someone's dock flew up under someone else's brand-new dock, and they weren't worried about that. This was a doctor, and he was worried, because someone had just got killed because they hit debris in the water. So I totally support inspecting without violating human rights, but, you know, when we think about somebody just got killed because of debris in the water, that's, actually, that's more, something more to worry about than whether, you know, it's hitting, hitting the docks. So again, our citizens are supposed to be our number-one safety thing, and I think if the city takes, takes it from that point of view, it's a safety issue opposed to hitting someone else's dock, I think we would be more safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Mr. Hensick, was that a comment, or no, you're okay. Back to council? Last word, Dave, any? I'm sorry, yeah, Dave Gaddis has the motion.
Call a question. Call a question.
Consideration of ordinance 21-10, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, providing for amendments in chapter 30, marine structures activities and facilities, section 30-2, section 30-52, section 30-53F and H, section 30-144-2, section 30-185, and section 30-191D. The city code of ordinances, providing for incorporation resides providing for approval of amendment to section 30-2, section 30-2. You mean that, please? Section 30-53F and H. Section 30-144-2, section 30-185, and section 30-191D. With the city code of ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for appeal of all ordinances in conflict here with them, providing for effective date. This is the first reading. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Notaro?
Aye.
Councilman Rocky?
Aye.
Councilman Rehmer?
Aye.
Councilman Gunn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Mendoza?
Aye. Passes six to zero, it will move to a second reading with advertising in between. Madam Clerk, please advertise. Item 12, authorization of the city manager to execute purchase order for audio/video upgrades in the council chamber. Contract with Encore Broadcasting Solutions for microphone speakers and a new wiring configuration. Please have, please may I have a motion with somebody?
Sure. Dave, you had a second?
Second.
Leslie Natero, it's up for discussion. Dave?
I will refer to the city manager.
City manager?
Yes, Mayor Council, we, we've done a lot of research on this. We have some new wiring, we've already put new wiring under the floor here. Kyle has kinda led this charge, and I'd like him to come up if you've got any questions. This is to upgrade the microphones, the, and to eventually get the audiovisual Zoom meetings in a cleaner situation.
Kyle, speak right into that microphone, because we won't be able to hear you with the present systems.
I'm Connor Wheeler, Community Services Administrator, Mayor and Council. We started this, the first phase of last budget cycle, and we, we started wiring CAT6 cables at two-floor locations, sending some back to the network room, and then some over here to the sound system room. And after, you know, getting the vice mayor's advice and working with Encore Broadcast Solutions, we came up with a plan to flip out, first and foremost, all the microphones except for, actually, this podium mic, because of, they thought this was the best solution that we had. Because we're changing out the rest of the mics to these stick mics, which pick up a lot better for purposes of you guys sitting in front of the microphone without people around you. But, I'm changing out all the mics, rewiring the speaker wire, putting in 12 speakers throughout. So, it's, it's six pairs, so 12 speakers, which, the way this, this room is wired is, the speakers are actually like in artificial, like they've dropped down to some times, but they're, they're speakers. So, those are quite old at this point because they were original. And the Encore Broadcast Solutions, their technology was, after that, not a time, things just wear out. So, it's hard to rewire, we put new speakers and the new microphones, and that should take care of all the, the audio issues that we do have in this room. And then, at the same time, what we're doing for these new floor jacks is we're running everything through the CAT6 cable as opposed to using some of these microphone wires that we do now. So, hopefully, that's gonna clean everything up. Putting the city clerk over that, floor jack over there, and then this podium over there.
That chair is swiped by that room, so.
Yeah, it's on the center. And so then it'll get, it'll get adapted through the CAT6 cable, and it'll all come back into the sound room, which will be wired with the microphones and speakers. And then, at the same time, they're gonna get a, a HD video signal that's gonna be wired through the, from the podium that's gonna be, take through CAT6 cable all the way to each monitor location and the projector. So, that in the future will, will allow us to upgrade our visual aspects of this room, you know, if we decide to.
We have monitor vision capabilities of seeing people over the dais here. I mean, we used to have monitors right in front of us, which were kinda nice. Now, we really like have to go down on the floor to see stuff.
Presently, we're gonna keep the same monitoring system, so it'll be, we'll be, like, say we do a Zoom call, but the idea is that the, the computer that's at this podium will be the, the main computer, so when someone comes up to speak, we'll see them. It'll be fed through all the monitors in the room, so that you'll, you'll see who's talking at the same time. So, right now, as far as a, a solution, I guess, I don't know how easy it is for you to see the screen.
It's back there, you can see it, but it's, you know, it is something nice if there was something, you know, up here, you know, around the circle or something that we all could, I mean, the best was when it was right in front of us because you had it right here, and I could still be looking at this and listening to you, and, you know, we can maintain eye contact and stuff, but...
Mind if I add something? Whenever we got the original quote, it was much higher, and it included replacing all of the sets in the room. And I, we kicked it back and said, "No, let's just use what we've got for now." So, although we don't have a way to see somebody, let's say in a Zoom meeting or a presentation, my, my thoughts initially were to hang a TV right there, that we could just kinda glance up at, that everyone would share. But, I, I think this phase allows everyone to be seen, and will also give us the opportunity to, to do Zoom calls much better, much more efficiently. And I think that was our first priority, was, was just to make sure everyone could hear.
Let me ask you this, we had video capability here, because there used to be monitors in front of each one of the seats here. I imagine that wiring is still in here, it may not be CAT6, but why can't, and it'd be hard to work through this, why can't we wind up, I mean, there's a big channel over here that nothing but pens and junk faults into. Why can't, even if we're setting up something as simple as a computer monitor, doesn't have to be something sexy, but have something right in front of us, because we're gonna have Zoom, and people are gonna start sharing screens. I mean, we just had a lady come in here tonight, made a presentation. Let's say she made that presentation on Zoom, you know, I want her to be able to share the screen with us, and also we'll see it. Now, it's okay if we're all in the middle here, but it may create some vision issues. If you have something right in front of you, everybody can see that. And I'm just wondering, I'm not saying no to this, I think this is a great step forward, but it, to me, I look at this channel in front of us, which the audience can't see right now, but there's a big channel here, and we can, even if it's, even if it's not pretty, if even if we're just hard-wiring some computer monitors and tying them into that station here, it seems to have video in front of us here, and would it be nice? I'd like to see the speakers clearly if they're particular, if they're going to Zoom.
What you're saying, we're doing a Zoom call, and then we wouldn't be using the iPads? So, everybody?
The iPads, yeah?
We have an iPad, so, yeah, so as long as you're doing a Zoom meeting, and that presenter is pipping it through, sharing the screen, then you guys will be able to see, and find it.
I have one other question for you, probably Kyle, because we were taking the lead on this. I know we, it looks like we worked through the Hillsborough Schools contract and stuff. Have we, I don't know if Hillsborough actually bought any of this same equipment, but I, I hate to spend, you know, $35,000 and find out, "Wow, they're like, these microphones are not as good." Have we went to Hillsborough and talked to them, or have seen their system in action?
I, I have not, but that's something I can do.
We, we did go to Bel Air, because they use the same, and they, they have strip speakers, and we had that discussion, and they felt that the, not the speakers, microphones, excuse me. They felt that the ones that they're proposing would be much better for us. And they've done all the work at, at Bel Air, and their system's pretty robust.
What's the, is the warranty guarantee, that type of stuff on this? Didn't say it on this, that's all.
Most, most county contracts are, are of this type, there's some kind of warranty, you have to define it. Exactly, but I would gather it's at least 12 months.
I would, I mean, this is my feeling, and I, I hope the council will join me on this. I'll pass this tonight, I'll vote yes for this, but I want the stipulation that we have at least a 12-month warranty on this. It's a $35,000 purchase, it's a major purchase for us. And, and Lynn, I mean, I, I would approve it as is with that stipulation, and if it's not, then please come back to us and don't go forward with it. That's, that's me, that's what I'm saying, I need at least four other people to join me, or three other people to join me on that.
Yeah, I'm looking real quick to see how we go along with that.
Well, okay, that's standard in the industry, yeah. Everybody okay with that? We're getting nods from, from everyone, Leslie? Yeah, you're good, okay, so we've got the majority at this point. So, Lynn, I mean, I, that's, that was my only concern, so we're good. Good job with this, and... Can't get it in, how fast can we get it in?
Hopefully, really quick.
Okay, good. The tin cans and the wire just started to go. Let me see if there's any questions from the audience, anyone? No, okay. Anything back on council? They have any last words?
I have a question.
Got it. Okay, so this is item 12, authorization for the city manager to execute purchase order for audio vid, video upgrades in the council chamber. He's due a contract with Encore Broadcasting Solutions for microphone speakers and new wiring. The stipulation that this council has given you, Mr. Reese, if this passes, is that it has at least a 12-month warranty. You'll check that, if it doesn't, we will not proceed with this, if it passes, okay? Do you agree with that? Are you nodding yes? Okay. With that, I can take a voice vote on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? We now have six people left, so six to zero. Passes Lynn, if you go forward with it, please. And if there's a problem, let us know. Kyle, thank you. Item 13 is consideration of resolution 202111, a resolution of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, calling for a general election to be held on March 15, 2022, for the purpose of electing three city council members and the mayor for three three-year terms to establish the qualifying date for persons seeking elective office for the 2022 municipal election, and establishing an effective date to establish the 2022 municipal election qualifying period. Do you have a motion? We call Leslie Natero, second?
Second.
Second, by Robin Aki. Discussion starting with Leslie. speaks for itself, right? Uh, Robin, any, anyone here? Citizens, any comments on this? Back to council, Leslie, any last words? Okay, I feel like I'm firing squad in the last words here. Um, consideration of resolution 202111, a resolution of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, calling for a general election to be held on March 15, 2022, for the purpose of electing three, three, three city council members and mayor for three-year terms to establish the qualifying date for persons seeking elective office for 2022 municipal election, and establishing an effective date. A yes vote passes this, let's do it, we have to do it by person, correct, this is the resolution? Yes, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Rocky?
Aye.
Councilman Rehmer?
Aye.
Councilman Gunn?
Aye.
Councilman Natero?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Mendoza?
Aye. Passes six to zero, proceed with these dates. Item 14, consideration of resolution 202112, a resolution of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, providing for November 12, 12, 2021, to be paid vacation day for the employees of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, and establishing an effective date, this is for employee-paid vacation day for COVID-19 service. Motion, please.
Somebody, Dave Gaddis, second?
Second.
By Mayor Robin Aki, Dave?
I will refer to the city manager, city manager? Yes, we did discuss this at the work session, and what I mentioned is, excuse me, that the city employees for the whole COVID had, had, all of them were vaccinated, and numerous cities and counties are given stipends actually, and days off for vacation. And I will say that our city staff, we didn't close one day during COVID, ever. We had city services every single day, and the staff came to work every day, and so the residents did not have any harm, or some places closed their doors and things of that nature. It's so unrecommended, isn't it, and send it to the employees, just to give them this day off.
You know, Lynn, I remember talking to you, like, when this thing just started, and I remember saying one thing, "Let's try and stay ahead of it, because we have no idea what's coming." And you just said something which sets us apart from a lot of cities, and we're a little city, okay? I remember Glenn Gunn quote, "There's condos that are bigger than us," okay, than our whole city, okay? And it's true, there's condos that have 10,000 people in it, but you didn't close one day, okay? And that is a testament to our employees, and I'm not about giving away free days, and giving away rewards, or showing up to work, but this was something extraordinary. I remember talking to you at one point, saying, "Lynn, we have no idea, we might, we had no idea if this was gonna be like the plague, and we'd have to close down sections of this," you had no idea how bad this was gonna be, nobody knew, okay? And everybody came in, there was no vaccines at the time, and everybody came in in a risky situation. It would've been easy for them to call in sick and just say, "Hey, forget it, I'm not coming in." I support this 100%.
Our employees.
There's a lot about our employees.
So, you stood up for it?
Yep. And this was, believe me, this was one, we're playing with death here, this wasn't, you know, this wasn't a flu. This was hard, so. Any other council comments?
Yeah, I, I have a problem with COVID-19. I mean, I don't know, a lot of private businesses are giving an extra day off. I don't have a problem by giving the employees an extra day off, I think they deserve it. I mean, especially these guys came in July, during that tropical storm that was coming up, and gave up their whole weekend. They were out there sanding. I, I would, I would support wholeheartedly, and if holiday falls on a Thursday, they automatically get Friday in the future. I think there's, I think the whole staff's under pain, to be honest with you. But, the problem is I have is with COVID-19, right? Yeah, it was a big scare and everything like that, but now, I don't know, are we gonna give them all? Are they gonna have to get their third shot, their fourth shot, their fifth shot, their eighth shot? I don't know what a vaccine is anymore, I never got a polio booster shot, is what I'm saying. So, I'm all for giving employees a day off, a few more days, but I just don't like the worry of the COVID-19. And I, I admire our employees wholeheartedly, you, Lynn, Patty, everybody, Kyle, I love them.
Lynn, I, I, you, you, I know we have the committee working on this, but I do remember being briefed on this when we went to the seminar in the summer up in Orlando. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, can't we use the payment of this, some of the money that we got from Washington for this relief? I think that, isn't that to be used for incentives and stuff like that, so this might be able to be used.
You can do that, but our staff's so small, I, I wouldn't, the, the accounting nightmare that that could create.
Now, you got a CPA firm, they do that.
Yes. It, it, you know, for the amount of money we're talking about, it's, it's negligible, and, and, uh, because I've talked to other cities that are actually doing this, "Well, yeah, I gotta do this, I gotta do that, I gotta have..." And we're six people, small staff, and we're not intending to try to create a bigger issue with the, the American Rescue money. We'd like to focus it on infrastructure, and that's what we're gonna discuss with the advisory committee. And I, I think it's negligible, really.
I, I just want it to be considered as an option to utilize that money. I mean, you know, there's 800 grand there, so if, you know, if we're looking at a spending, we don't have to spend any last penny on the infrastructure, that's obviously where it's probably gonna go. But, you know, it's not a hard thing to come up with what the daily pay is for everybody.
Well, it's not so much that, but it's, as I understand it, and, and I've talked to a couple cities, the reporting of spending that money for what I'll call other things than infrastructure or things of that nature, the, the reporting is, is gonna be pretty extensive, to what I understand. And we're not intending to hire a consultant to do it at this point. So, and, but a lot of cities are, they're, they're going out and hiring consultants to, to monitor because of the reporting requirements.
Any other council comments? Dave, any last, oh, I'm sorry, citizens? Back to council? Anything, Dave?
No, I like this, let's vote for it.
Got it. Consideration of resolution 2021- Got it. Consideration of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beller Beach, Florida, providing for November twelfth, twenty twenty-one to be a paid vacation day for employees of the city of Beller Beach, Florida, and establishing an effective date, uh, employee-paid vacation day for COVID-nineteen service. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Natero?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Mandel?
Aye. Passes six to zero.
And give it to the staff and then your, and yourself and Patty with our compliments. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item fifteen, authorization to execute an interlocal agreement between Pinellas County and NPDES MS four co-permittees for Florida Department of Environmental Protection annual regulatory program and surveillance fee. This is an interlocal agreement that covers years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six. Motion, please. We call Nancy Natero, second.
Second.
Gaddis, Leslie?
I will pass this back to Lynn.
Lynn Reese?
Yeah, Mayor Consil, this is, uh, 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 there's several co-permittees with the NPDS program in Pinellas County. We happen to be one of them. And this is a fee that they collect annually. Our contribution to this, uh, surveillance fee is sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents in, uh, twenty twenty-one. So, uh, what I'm asking is, uh, for authorization for the mayor and the city manager to execute this agreement.
Should we send it to the finance committee? I'm just playing with it. Sixty-four bucks, huh? Okay. Any other questions on the council? Citizens, so much?
Did we spend for the paper?
Let me see.
Fred Riley, the videographer who are making the money right now.
Right. Spent more in review and paper than we did what we're going to have to pay.
Exactly. So there's no citizen comments. Back to council. Leslie, any last words here?
For her.
Okay. Authorization to execute, item fifteen, authorization to execute an interlocal agreement between Pinellas County and NPDES MS four co-permittees for the Florida Department of Environmental Protection annual regulatory program and surveillance fee. I believe we can do this with a voice vote. Right, Madam Clerk? Yes, we can. Everybody in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Six to zero. Passes. Item sixteen, authorization to award a professional services contract for seawall and boat ramp design. This is for design and engineering services for seawall and boat ramp renovation. This is for Seventh Street. Uh, motion, please. Motion for Frank Baker, second.
Second.
Dave Gaddis, Frank.
Long time coming.
It's more than Seventh Street, just to tell you.
Seven to sixteen.
It's, uh, Seventh Street, uh, seawall and boat ramp, Sixteenth Street seawall and, uh, a short seawall out here along the, the circle where, uh, I'm sure all of you have been here to the water and you've seen the scouring and we're going to prevent that washout.
So this is going to be the engineering contract?
The engineering.
And I, Lynn, I'm going to share this because I had a citizen ask me this. So you and I have already spoken on this, but I want to share. There's none, June is the only person left in the audience, but they, they'll see it on the video. Give the citizens a rough timetable of the rebuilding of the Seventh Street dock and this whole engineering project and what we're looking at over here.
Well, I would, I would anticipate the engineering will take us thirty to sixty days to, to come back from, uh, root and then we'll put it out. I'll come to the council and ask for authority to bid it. And we'll, we'll bid this probably almost one project. Uh, we've got funding for the seawall. We've got funding for the boat ramp. So, uh, after we bid that, sometime after the first of the year.
And we have money for the dock also. So I want to, I want to lay the citizens' fears because there was some real fear. There's people who own boats that regularly, I mean, said, is the dock gone? I'm like, no, the dock is gone temporarily.
Well, that's a separate project.
Right. But what you told, what you told me was that, that we could expect the dock probably around the spring of twenty twenty-two. That's, that's our estimate. So, so the dock is coming back. It's coming back bigger and better than ever, hopefully, or at least nice and, um, nice and sturdy and everything else. There are some, when we do this, there's some comments, you know, from the citizens and stuff, recording tie poles and dock construction and stuff like that. So I just want to make sure that we, make sure, I mean, I know we're going to do it in front of the citizens. I just want to make sure that we highlight that because we have some very experienced voters in this area who use this and they can add certainly some input into how it should be designed and stuff. So. They were explaining tie poles and they were like, this, the old one was wrong. And I'm like, we got to talk when the engineers are here.
Right, right.
Okay. All right.
But that's a separate, just a.
That's separate. We're just, this is just for the seawall and the ramp.
Seawall ramp and the seawall at Sixteenth and out here.
Any citizen comments? Counsel?
This is going to change the look out there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's gonna, gonna improve that appearance and, uh, uh, you know, it'll have a raised cap and we'll kind of do some more landscaping behind it, but that's a, really a separate project.
Are people still going to be able to swim and bait?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're just trying to protect because eventually with the scouring that keeps happening, it's just going to keep coming closer and closer. There's rock out there. We have a bad storm. That, that rock isn't preventing anything. The, the rock will still end up against it because it's a good protection for the seawall. But, uh, this, this will at least stop that scouring basically from the, the bridge apron that's down below to the walkover. That's, that's where the biggest scouring is.
That was my only concern, that people will still be able to enjoy. Because I do see a lot of people fish over there. Young, you know, you have a lot of great guys for little kids to.
Just do the other walkout on the beach and do, do whatever they do.
All right. Um, I'm going to call a question. Is there any other objections here? Uh, authorization item sixteen to award a professional services contract for seawall and boat ramp design. Again, the exclamation is design and engineering services for seawall and boat ramp renovation. Yes, vote. May move this forward. Uh, we can do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Six to zero. Move forward, please, Lynn. Uh, that concludes our regular agenda. We now go into any unfinished business? Is there any? I'm hearing none. I move to the city attorney. Item, oh, this is numbered wrong. Okay, so city attorney is actually eighteen, city manager is nineteen, city clerk is twenty, city council is twenty-one. Item seventeen is unfinished business. That's completed by an eighteen city attorney.
Um, no report due to the late hour.
To me. We've done a lot later than this. It's been a long one. Uh, city manager?
When you haven't had dinner yet, it is a void.
Well, excuse me, I'm Mayor Consil. I've got a few things. Uh, we're going to bring the buoy ordinance to have another discussion with the work session.
The what?
The work session, the buoy ordinance.
Yes.
Uh, we've done some more research with the communities up and down the beach and, uh, I'll have probably some more before the work session, which will be the fifteen, that's normally the plan. Uh, at your seat, I gave you the annual report that we prepare every year in November. Kind of highlights what the, the, uh, staff has done over the year. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, I just wanted to reiterate to the staff, it continued to provide services and, uh, they worked diligently to control costs and where we could increase any revenues, they, they worked hard at doing that. And, uh, I think our, uh, fiscal year, twenty twenty-one budget year, uh, a lot of things have improved and, uh, not only with infrastructure taxes, rentals, uh, parking fees, a lot of those things have, uh, increased dramatically. So the staff's done, done a great job with that. And, uh, we got through the CRS verification visit and that was a positive. We'll, we'll talk to the sheriff about the supplemental stuff.
Yes.
And we'll figure out something with that. Uh.
And I think I said it, but the role of agreement with that, right, council? And you've had mental service, the supplemental sheriff services. Leslie, I know you weren't on council when we started that, but we have some option. We've set aside some money to use the, the sheriff on special occasions for specialized directed control speeding, things like that. We don't announce it. Uh, city manager works it out and surprise, surprise, you're doing fifty-five on the bridge and it's a bad weekend. So.
The fastest cars I see are the ones that are out at five in the morning. Well, that's whenever, uh, if you're a runner, you're walking your dog, you're trying to cross the intersection, uh, someone's going to get mowed down.
Yeah, it, it seems like too, I mean, you know, and again, I'm not going to give any hints, but, you know, when we get to the weekends and stuff, we can hear it, you know, particularly now that the windows are open. You can just hear that they hit Beller Beach, you know, Indian Rocks is all lit up and then it looks like we're asleep here because we're residential. They let it loose and, you know, and they're flying. But I will say that it looks like, you know, that sign across the street, Beller Shore doesn't like, by the way, um, because they never told us it was coming, I guess. Um, they, uh, but they said we like it though because it's, it's, it's making people slow down. And I think it is making people slow down. So that's a good thing. But, um, they fly still, you know, up the other way. And, uh, it's, it's a little scary because, and occasionally you will hear the sheriff racing after them. So chalk one up for a good reason.
Yeah, I think, I think those, those radar signs do help to some degree. You're not going to stop everybody. Uh, I mean, I'll give you an example. Going down Gulf Boulevard last week, uh, one day with, uh, the COVID, COVID guy, him and I went out and spent the afternoon together. Uh, in a city truck because I can't go in his car.
Go ahead.
Out because we're not going to whatever speed he was wanting. Car goes out in the middle lane and passes us. But, you know, we didn't have those cars. There was no way to go, but, you know, it's, it happens and you ain't going to prevent it at all. Uh, I just wanted to bring up, uh, last month you made a comment about the storm on our pond over there and I did contact the county, uh, just to see what they do because I know what they told me two or three years ago and they pretty much told me the same thing. Uh, they're, they have no intent of digging it out. They do a, uh, inspection quarterly and I got them to provide me the last two inspections. And really what they're looking for is silt in the, the structure that's across the street. Uh, and they do remove that when they come for the inspection. But I, one thing additionally I asked them about is the fence. I said either fix it or get rid of it. Because it's really not served a purpose and it's rusted. Now, there would have to be something put along the structure which is, uh, almost directly across, kind of at an angle across the street. It's the concrete barrier, the weir that the bar flows into. Uh, but they are looking into that. So that's just to give you an update. They're, they're not interested in digging it out. And I don't know, did you talk to somebody specifically, but these were the storm, or people. I just wanted to let you know that.
Thanks for checking up on that.
And, uh, that's all I have. Mike it out. Get it together on the board just in training. We did that last spring. So that's how it began.
And I have one thing I want you to just, um, I don't know whether it's even, it may not even be our issue, but at the Twelfth Street easement, the house next to there, which has had eternal construction, okay? Apparently, I heard a report, it was told to me, so I didn't see it. I didn't get pictures. But apparently they were blocking our easement, pouring concrete at the house. And then we went by the other day and there was cones in the street. Now, I don't know whether those are undergrounding cones or they're the remnants of the sidewalk cones, but there happened to be a bicyclist in the bicyclist lane and they, that's what they put the cones in. So now this bicyclist had to come over into the traffic lane, which is now, as we're hearing, will maybe a little narrower than it needs to be. It's a mess. And I'm like, if they're doing this unilaterally, that is a real problem. It goes back to the sheriff enforcement. Nobody should be blocking anything on Gulf Boulevard in our town or in Beller Shore. And that's a sheriff thing. But if they have permission or a part of the undergrounding, I don't know. So I said, let me bring it up to you and just see what you.
Well, part, part of, part of the work was undergrounding, like the last couple of days, the last week. Uh, and then, uh, one day they were pouring the apron to the driveway to the new home, uh, which, you know, they've got to have some kind of safety traffic control and they put the cones out there. Uh, I don't, there was no restriction to going to Twelfth Street. I mean, you could turn in there, but there was a cone before it and a cone after.
I heard opposite. I heard that the cement via molds or the, whatever the cement mixture, whatever they were using was blocking it. Of course, the person did not have their cell phone with them and I did not get a picture of it. Um, I, I don't know.
And that, that could have happened, but I'm saying it wasn't preventing, you know, maybe there was a concrete.
Temporary.
Temporary, you know, dumping his load of concrete. Well, I don't know where he's going to dump it unless he's in there.
I saw it and, um, it, it was a mess between the, the traffic, uh, the, the way the traffic flows.
Right.
That sign, uh, that hitting in the way and then they had construction and, uh, the, the lane that everyone is supposed to now go into to go straight was blocked and just, it was complete confusion.
Right. Well, that was when they were doing the drive. I don't think it's been a problem with the undergrounding people there off the street. And they're, you know, the spectrum, who it is, shooting, shooting the, uh, undergrounding project on that side of the street. Get rid of the crossbars.
That was the one thing I had. Anybody else? Any citizen questions from the city manager?
I, I had, Jake, I wanted to go back on that double turn lane. That's something we really need to look into. I purposely tried to stay in that lane, uh, coming here tonight and you just can't do it. There's not enough room to make that left turn. Uh, I don't know what the face is, but someone's, we're going to have some bad pileups out there.
Yeah, I, I've talked to the county about a couple of things already. It may be that they need to shape the turn a little better. It may be that their initial recommendation was to take that out of now. It's backed up so you can kind of slide over and get in that other lane. The other question that's been brought up is, it used to be, uh, when it was red, left turn and there was no cars coming from the other way, it was a bleak caution, caution, where you could make a left turn. Those are questions that I've posed to the county. I haven't got to answer yet.
They've worked out whatever, you know, problems we have because the, the busy season is coming really soon and, uh, you know, there's definitely some questions that have.
Part of it, I think, too, is it's, it's new to people. That's, that's a little bit of a struggle, I'm sure.
Another issue with that is what you turned down to Cosway Boulevard, is there enough room for the guys in the right lane to merge into? If there are a whole bunch of people coming in the right lane to merge into the left lane, heading east, is there enough distance there?
Maybe two.
Does that make sense?
Maybe, at times. It's, it's going to require, uh, a lot of cooperation in an overly aggressive Pinellas County for this to work out.
And I would say also my concern, because I've tried out that lane too, the new left lane. And the concern is when you're taking a left, the people come the opposite way, taking a right are kind of used to going. So that may have to be a no right on red.
Well, they have, they have a red light.
Right, but we all know those are heels. So a no right on red may have to be added there if we keep it just.
But if we do that, and Glenn Gunn wants to speak, so I'll get to him. Uh, but if we do that, you know, last year was the first year I lived south of the bridge, I lived south of the bridge, we lived south of the bridge. We were getting constant traffic on the weekends on our side, which we used to never get that as they were going up to the light. Every weekend there was traffic. So if we make that no turn on red, um, we may push it back to Indian Rocks. I mean, the county really, yeah, it was, yeah, yeah. So if we go no red on red on red, it really, but I hear you because now everybody's merging into the same piece of.
Well, and I think it's partially, like I said, there's some newness here, uh, and, and even the county said, you know, we've got to give it some time and, uh, see how it works out. And they're monitoring it and, uh, with their cameras. And, uh, there seems to be two green lights in the straight lane and I, that's another question I'm asking. Because it looks like lights were two there, or should, to me, just be one, unless there's some reason for it.
Well, they studied this. It's great. Glenn Gunn has a question.
Yeah, I was just going to add one thing and, uh, keep that on that thing is, you know, I used it exclusively for the last three weeks after it went in. I had absolutely no problems. It seemed like the people making the right turn lane coming north on, uh, the, the board, you would find, and I had no problems merging as the traffic in the first lane seemed to be very cooperative and not always barking before I even got to the. and not always barking before I even got to the first street coming off of Southbound, I mean, the causeway there. I've had, I've had no problems. Now, the substantive feedback is, just like the city manager said, there's an extra green light there, people are confused by it. And the other thing I would add is, we probably need to validate the turn radius on that dash line for the center lane. It seems like it's very right angled instead of a curve there, and I'm thinking maybe it has something to do with the turn radius for the large trucks that are turning off of Gulf Boulevard to access to Causeway. I, I, I think the county looked at it, error of engineering, it's what happened when they called it into us, they obviously have some standards for merging there, so I'm not quite sure that's an issue, right? Although, when the city manager, I would say, give it some time, because just like the sign says, saying there's a new traffic pattern there, and people aren't fully aware of it. I think the real acid test is gonna come with the snowbird season and the spring rain, so I think we really need to sit back and let us evaluate it a little bit more and see what happens. But it seems like the traffic seems to be moving fairly efficiently through there, and that's, that needs to be the first step to be determined before we start taking out the island further to the north of the intersection and move the trees and that sort of thing. With respect to the, these speed signs, my question is, is we've got new speed signs to the south, and we've got the one that comes off of the bridge. The question is, have we collected any speed data from those signs yet? Because we just had a citizen's complaint about excessive speed on the, coming down the bridge there, and we probably need to pull it out and take a look and see what we're actually seeing there, as well as, we've always had the anecdotal complaints on the southbound Gulf Boulevard there, so we probably need to take a look at that, that kind of stuff.
Right, the county, I just have to request it from them, and they did give it to us for the south one a couple times, and we found that it actually slowed the traffic. And, and I'm, I'm thinking, you know, when I've been out on Gulf Boulevard, and see people in front of you, for the most part, they're hitting their brakes and slowing down. So, we'll get some data from that. The bridge, maybe a little...
I have two more points, while you're done.
Yeah, I'm finished.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, we talked about the special enforcement we paid for to have the officers sitting at the bottom of the bridge there, with their radar, and we didn't see anything significant there, and maybe it's time to put a speed box further up on the bridge and take a look at that sort of... So that's, that's one thing. The second thing I would, we talked about some of the lawn services and the delivery trucks parking in the center turn lane there, and I would just advise a cautionary, make sure we truly understand the problem before we take action on it, because a, a consequence of that might be, is if you insist on these large trailers and trucks pulling into private drive service of Beller Shore, imagine what it's gonna be like when those trucks or trailers have to back out during spring rain or during snowbird season and tire the traffic as they try to maneuver and stay in the parking lanes. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. City manager, anything else? Okay, all right. City clerk? This is your time. Oh, you're very welcome, thank you, great job. Enjoy the day off. And city council, we start with Leslie Natera. Glenn Gunn? I don't know if you heard me.
I'm gonna stay with you.
Okay, thank you. Frank Banker?
Reviewing Beller Shore's minutes, audio with this past one. They received our letter. It wasn't received too well by one commissioner, but the mayor seemed to, thought it was a pretty generous offer, I think. Words they didn't say, but they're looking into it a little bit more aggressively. They haven't shot it down. But the attorney, I don't believe, has all the facts with the FWC, and I wrote to Patty. Because I want, I gotta, a citizen asked me about the buoy changes in Beller Beach, which he says, you know, it was stated at the council that I'm against any boats coming into shore. I've never said I was against any boats coming into shore. I was never against any buoy changes in Beller Beach. I still am, I'm not against the buoy changes in Beller Beach, and I'll get into it in the next work session. But I think what we need to, and I would like to reach out to Mayor Schmidt, and see if I can have a discussion with him, I don't know if we have an email address to him or not, and do some clarification on all this.
Frank? I, I listened to those meetings routinely as part of my diligence for the city, and I heard everything they said about the buoys, and I, you know, because of the sunshine thing, I can't talk with you, so now I can talk with you about it. It was fairly well received. The person who doesn't receive it well, doesn't receive anything well for us, so I'm not, I kind of discount that. The one comment that I do remember hearing from their attorney, they said, "Maybe Beller Beach doesn't realize how generous and all for this was," because they were coming up with some estimates of like a hundred thousand plus to do this. And my first inkling was, a hundred thousand dollars to sink a few buoys? I mean, if the state has made it this complicated, wow, they're almost making a disincentive for safety. And that is just against everything we stand for as a city. It should be everything against that they stand for. I don't know if, like you said, she doesn't have the right information, or did we shoot ourselves in the foot? Because when I heard a hundred thousand dollars, I almost fell off my chair, going, "Wow, did we just offer them a hundred thou?" Because that's a chunk of change. But I'm not saying no to it, but I just want to make sure we know what we're getting into, because they seem to think like, "Wow, thanks a lot, this is really a great offer."
We're only talking about two buoys. And I think, and she was, she was talking about replacing them all.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and to put in two buoys is probably gonna cost us, after we buy the buoys and what have you, somewhere around three thousand dollars.
Well, it's a big difference, I can deal with it.
You know, now, there is gonna be some cost for them to rewrite their ordinance, because it'll have to be clear. And I, I truly believe that Beller Shore's put in, put in a request right now for two permits, with no wake zone and idle speed, that permit would pass right now.
No, it wouldn't.
Well, I'm telling you right now...
Not according to Fish and Wildlife.
Well, according to Fish and Wildlife, if you go back a year ago, they asked repeatedly, "What's gonna be on the buoys?" And in the emails, it changed it with Kyle, said, "Idle speed, no wake." Three times, they asked. So, the other towns aren't being attacked, only us. I mean, we should've, we should've just re-modified that permit back when I first ordered, and I think we'd have got passed easily, but...
You know, Frank, we've had Lynn Reeves go across, and I think go across, across the street, but really it's down the road here. He's went to their meetings and spoke about undergrounding, stuff like that. You're clearly the, the most knowledgeable person that we have in this city on this, on this buoys issue. I have absolutely personally no issue whatsoever with you going across, speaking with them, speaking at their meeting, because I sensed that they were open to it. And if you read some of the, actually some of the stuff that I've picked up in the discovery, they were not for it a little while ago, so I think there's been some breakthrough over here, and it is a safety issue, and if, if, you know, if it's three thousand dollars and they say yes, I mean, we're gonna vote on that real quickly, because that's a no-brainer, so...
I've talked to some of their residents, and asked council to bring them back. Some of their commissioners actually addressed it, put on, put on the record before that they would like to see them back. And they actually used the scenario, used the Pinellas, pennies for Pinellas, but it was already spent. But all that said, is, I think it can be done easily if they get the correct information, and I, I'm not degrading their attorney or anything like that, I just think there should be a...
I mean, I mean, and, you know, attorney to attorney, we've had some battles and stuff like that with litigation, but she did very, I thought, a very thorough explanation to that council, so she put some time in on it. Again, she may have some misinformation. I have no problem with you reaching out to the mayor, it's up to the other council members, but you certainly have my stamp of approval. Any other council members out there, if you reach out to them, if they want you to speak at the meeting? I mean, you know, you're not representing the council, but you're giving the information to them, you help clarify it, and if you can move it forward, and, you know, and you know there's one person that has a tougher self than the other four, but, you know...
And he seemed to be waving a little bit towards you, too.
Okay, we're okay with that?
I think we, you know, before you do that, Frank, at the work session, we need to clarify what our wording is gonna be, and, because we sent what we thought we had back up to the FWC, and they gave us another rendition, which Fred and I... So, if they're amiable to it, we just need to be able to make sure...
This'll be what their wording is gonna be. We don't know what their city's gonna, I mean, we know what we wanted, you know, and we were...
Well, it's gonna probably have to be the same thing, you know, or something similar, unfortunately.
I can tell you, one of the deciding votes over there talks about how he brings his paddle board out from his house. I've seen him, so he does...
That's not a restriction in, in anything.
Right.
The, the issue is, unfortunately, based on my last conversation with FWC, is we don't qualify to have a idle no-wake zone. And unfortunately, because of all this back and forth, they're looking at us, and... So, we have to come up with whatever zone is, and then change, change our buoys, which...
Well, okay, that's, that's a matter of discussion another night, but...
Yeah, we'll, we'll have that discussion at the work session, if everybody's okay with putting that back.
The only reason I'm saying though, they're meeting, we have a work session, I think, around the 15th. They're usually, their meetings are around the 18th or something like that, so...
Yeah, we may have a better understanding once.
He'd still wanna get on the agenda for their meeting if he wanted to speak at the meeting.
Well, you go to their meeting and speak, then.
Well, I'd rather just see if I can get a call from the mayor.
I would like to know the direction, what it is that we are deciding upon, before you have that conversation, so that we're on the same page. I don't want them to agree to something, and then we have to bend to match them if we're all going to have to do the same thing.
I don't think we all have to be the same, and we are two separate cities, so...
Well, Mayor, you do, because they don't qualify any more than we do to have like a idle no-wake zone, based on the statutes.
But they could, let me give you a scenario, they could have no, like, our first thing was no, no vessels at all, and we could have...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that's what I was talking about, yeah. I mean, if they don't qualify, they don't qualify, no matter what they do, they're not gonna qualify. They're not gonna qualify neither do we. But they could say no, nothing, which I don't think they will. I think they're gonna go what we have, they're gonna probably want manually propelled, you know, paddle type things. But, so I don't think it matters, because they'll get their own choice, really. You know, we, we could have two separate things, we could...
Right, but what I'm saying is, the idle no-wake is...
Is out.
It's, it's pretty much dead. And talking to Clearwater, they have a no-swim zone up to somewhere along North Beach, but beyond that, there's no buoys, no nothing, you can do whatever you want.
That's pretty much private residence, in theory.
Indian Shores or Indian Rocks has no wake, but nobody's brought that to the FWC's attention. Indian Shores has no buoys. They opted to get rid of them. And Madeira has a swim area, swim only, no, no wake zone. So, we're getting the information from the other cities.
So, unfortunately, we got attention, but not the attention we wanted.
Yeah, because we don't have a lot, we don't have a boat ramp, let's see, what else was there? Within 500 feet, we don't have a fuel station. All of that was, was, you know, brought up to us when we sent back what we thought we were gonna do, unfortunately. But we'll get...
Yeah, the no-vestment zone down, people still do it, so, I mean, it's, you know, we got four sheriff's vehicle, four sheriff's boats in the whole county, so, you know, you take your choice. I'm not telling anybody to break the law, but, you know, people are gonna chance it, I would guess.
Yeah, you're not, you're not gonna prevent it.
The difference is, you chance it, you hit somebody, you got massive liability, because now you're violating the rules. And have fun, you know, the person you hit will own your boat, so how about you end that game? Frank? I'm okay with you going right now, but we have to vote on it, necessarily, let's make sure everybody's on the same page, but... Because if they could do this different than us, the state could ultimately tell them their limits, and their limits would be the same as ours, they're not gonna get boats, so, so I'm okay with it.
I, I would like to know exactly what he's going to say, and the reason why is because it looks to me like approaching the FWC backfired. I know it wasn't intentional, but it does worry me.
Well, I didn't approach the FWC, the city approached the FWC. When I brought this to the attention of the city, saying, "Hey, we got a safety issue here," and I got residents complaining. If we would've just gone to the FWC and said, "We need to amend the permit again because we removed too many buoys," this thing would even been, we'd been done it over, right? But we looked at it, trying to say, "Keep the buoys out." That's, that's what the city thinks. That's when the FWC got their hairs up.
Again, I, I think Frank should get a call into the mayor, get on their agenda. We can certainly, you know, make sure we have talking points given to them on the 15th, you know, that our voices are heard the way we want them to be heard. But I think he's gotta start this ballroom, and things move slower over there than they do here. They don't have the staff like we do. Getting Mayor Schmidt, he's, you know, all suicide, he was a decent guy, I was able to reach out with him many times in the past, and...
And I talked to him once, he's like a real nice guy.
He'll listen to you. I mean, he even tried with the, with the shade ordinance to fix it, but his council shot him down, and then we got into this, so, he tried. So, is he gonna talk to the mayor now, and then what are we doing? I'd like to get him going on the mayor, at least, and then he comes back and...
Well, if, if it needs to be an agenda item, you know, I would say add it, and we're going to have a work session right before that meeting, so let's just kinda, let's work on the game plan together, but the message you're gonna deliver, and...
To me, we're wasting two weeks, that's the only problem I have with that. I think, let him talk to the mayor, and then we...
No, no, you can speak to one council member, but it really, that's one council member, and they can't speak to anyone else. So, you can, you can talk to one, but until you address the entire council, you're not gaining any traction. And, and I, I know Bob also, and he's, he'll listen to you, but he, under the current circumstances, doesn't give a whole lot back. He's, he's very, very careful about his wording and what he says. So, I would just let him know that you want to put an agenda item on there, and you'd like the opportunity to speak, and then, let's kind of do a review of what it is that you're going over to talk to, because I don't want it to appear that it's Frank Banker. I would like this council to know what it is that you're going to...
So how about if I just do this, I'll just go over and talk to Mr. Citizen?
You can do it, you don't need our permission for that. Just say you're representing yourself, or you're just getting some information. I mean, I think he'll give you the idea, the idea of if it's something that will float, you know, no pun intended with the buoys, but he'll know what his council's feelings are. And I think there is four people on that council that will go along, you know, County Mayor Schmidt, he might have four people, you might have one. Problem is, that one person is a very influential council member there, so, so that's, and that, the extent that... Let's put it on our work session, and then Frank, come back to us maybe with some better insight, and then we can say, "Here's our city's position," and he can convey that. I'm, I'm be able to, I'll be with that, I'm be able to...
Yeah, not, I plan to put the buoy ordinance, discussion of the buoy ordinance on the work session.
We have a lot of this coming work session, so, I mean... We still have some leftovers.
We have three other things, the report, the buoy, trying to remember what the other...
We still have a letter that we're writing to Beller Shore about parking lots up along the...
Yeah, that, that's on there, oh, here it is. The Attorney General's opinion that I brought up, the best practices for staff before you... Lynn brought up, discussion of the letter to Beller Shore, and then I've added the buoy ordinance. So that's, that's right now, that's...
Frank, I'm still on you, okay? Robin... Robinaki?
I'm good.
Okay. Dick Gaddis?
No comment.
And I don't have any comment either. It's late, we've had a nice meeting, I enjoyed it, we're all done. Next meeting is November fifteenth. We have a city council work session at six P M. For these items. Patty, what's the approximate deadline for getting anything on the agenda if anybody comes up with anything else?
Let's see. Wednesday, the, oh, it would be, it'd be when, so probably Tuesday.
Tuesday, so you're off on Friday, so you're.
Thursday and Friday, because we want to get it out on Wednesday.
Next Tuesday, basically. Okay.
Well, molding mats will.
Molding mats, yes. If we can, maybe if we can just download a picture of that for everybody.
It's almost like your beach mat, except it's more sturdy.
Is it like a, like a foam or something, or?
No, no, it's a, it's a actual, like a. It's, it's a roll out mat. It rolls up and you just roll it out and add sections to it. It's been around many, many years.
My only concern, and maybe this is something to look at beforehand, we have limited access on Morgan because of the sea oats and the dunes and stuff like that. So how does, we don't want everybody walking on it. It's supposed to be for, you know, people with disabilities and stuff. So how do we work that into the existing system?
Well, that's a wide opening there.
Why not? Okay.
Because that's where we go in for the nature nourishment. So, the opening's wide. I think there, if I remember right, there are like three or four, four, five. Probably four, because of wheelchair.
Two different sizes on the website.
Is that what it says?
I don't know what they are, but.
But I'll get you some pictures of stuff.
I don't, obviously, I don't want to disturb a dune or a sea oats or anything like that.
No, it would have to go where the concrete ends.
Right, okay.
It might work.
And the prices, right, so, great. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, for adjourn.